Thank you. May I have a pledge of allegiance, Mr. Bowen?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to make a couple of statements right up front before we begin this hearing. This is a business meeting. There will be no outbursts. There will be no phones. If you have your phone with you, please turn it off. There is no recording of this meeting. If you want a recording of the meeting, you can get it by asking through a public records request. It is being videotaped. Are the rules plain and understood?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the hearing, please.
I move to open the public hearing for the dangerous dog's dog hearing at 7:00 p.m.
In the matter of?
Requested by Matthew Heron regarding dog owned by Aaron Bagan.
Is there a second to the motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself? Yes. The hearing is open. Now, I'm going to turn the running of the hearing over to Town Council, Richard Bowen, and he will be running the meeting, so all questions will go through him. Any comments will go through him. Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Matthew Heron. Just by way of ground rules, for those of you who've had the pleasure of running kind of like a clerk magistrate's hearing over in District Court, the complainant will speak first, present evidence. The dog owner's counsel will have an opportunity to cross-examine. We'll then give the board members an opportunity to ask questions of any witnesses. At the conclusion of the complainant's case, I'll ask the dog owner to present a case if appropriate. We'll take closing statements and then turn the matter back over to the board of the select board, pardon me, for its consideration of an appropriate disposition. So that's how we'll do it. I'll start by reading the notice. Notice dated March 4th, 2025 to Aaron Bagan, 58 Standish Ave, East Wareham. This was sent by certified mail. Dear Aaron Bagan, in courts with provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held before the select board on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. regarding a dog owned or kept by you. Said hearing has been scheduled in response to a complaint submitted by Matthew Hernan regarding Anna Incident, which was stated to have occurred on October 22nd, 2022, at 8 Burgess Point Road. If you require more information, please let me know. To your earliest convenience, the location of the hearing is here. You are requested to attend this hearing in person in order that your interests be properly protected. Sincerely, Judith Whiteside, Chair, Wareham Select Board. We have a green card, so we have return of service, so we know notice was received. Is Mr. Hernan here?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Hernan, could you sit up at the table? Why don't you take the seat over on the on the far end? Okay. And then for Ms. Bagan, who have we got?
We have Ms. Bagan. She's with us, with three handlers of Smokey who would like an opportunity to speak.
Of course. And then Attorney Jeremy Cohen.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Your accent for introductions. Attorney Jeremy Cohen with Boston Dog Lawyers. This is Kim, our paralegal.
Great.
Do you have a last name spelled for me, please?
Sure. Mine, C.O.H.E.N. And Kim Short, S.H.O.R.T.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused right off the bat because that happens to me sometimes. You are the attorney for?
Dog owner.
Is there, Mr. Hernan, do you have an attorney present?
No, I have plenty of witnesses here.
Okay, thank you.
So what we'll do at this point is, I'll ask anyone who intends to testify to stand and raise your right hand so that I may administer an oath.
Technically, me too.
Who's going to testify? You bet. Okay, all said, "You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God."
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated. So, Mr. Hernan, you are here pursuant to a sworn complaint about the conduct or alleged conduct of the dog. Do you wish to make an opening statement before you testify and call witnesses?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
All right. So, October 22nd?
I'm sorry, for the record, you need to identify yourself for the record the first time that you speak?
All right. So, my name is Matthew Hernan.
Hold on one second. The attorney, I think, has a preliminary matter.
Thank you. Just Attorney Jeremy Cohen speaking. Do you need me to stand, or is this okay?
No, that's fine.
This is brief. Just for the record, we can go forward, but I just want to make an objection to having the hearing that, just due to the untimeliness of it, we're two and a half years post incident, and while the statute doesn't speak to a statute of limitations, just my argument would be, it's just an unreasonable delay when this was an available remedy to the complainant eight hundred days ago.
Thank you. Your objection is included in the record and noted. It's a question that I myself had, and the best I can analogize it to would be something like a tort statute of limitations, but that's the best that I can do, tort statute of limitations being three years. So, but it's in the record.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernan, go ahead.
My name is Matthew Hernan. I have a question for you, sir. So, I was told by the select board right after the incident happened that I had to be done with medical treatment before I could present the case, correct?
I'm not familiar with that, but we're here tonight for you to present your case.
Because that's what the town of Wareham told me on, like, probably November timeframe. So, in retrospect to what, you know, her counsel asked, like, that is the reason why, because I had been going to, you know, going through medical treatment for so long. So, not only at Mass General, but at the Department of Veteran Affairs, to have these issues tried, you know, try to be figured out. So...
Well, just so you know, you're here tonight. The hearing is opened. Here's an opportunity for you to present your
Awesome.
...your testimony, your witnesses. The board is not concerned with awarding compensation for medical injuries.
Totally fine.
That's not the sort of thing that happens here. This just pertains to whether a dog bit you and why, if it happened, and if there are any mitigating circumstances.
Absolutely.
So, please, go ahead.
All right. So, on October 22nd, 2022, I was a groomsman in Rich and Aaron's wedding. You know, throughout the entire time, my statement that I sent into the board, you know, shows, you know, I had been walking Smokey. I'd been giving him snacks. Like, you know, it was a very fun time. It was a very busy time. There was a lot of people walking the dog, playing with the dog, taking pictures with the dog, and I was like, well, you know, he's been in his crib for a little bit. I'll take him for a walk, right? So, back and forth, back and forth, the entire night. When it got down to when my cousin Rich came inside, he was completely blackout drunk.
Excuse me, you need to use last names as well as first names to identify?
All right.
Thank you.
So, my cousin, Richard Bagan Jr., when he walked inside, he was very drunk. He had gone to one of the back bathrooms in one of the bedrooms on the ground floor. He had been in there for quite some time, and Aaron Bagan could not find him. And after a certain amount of time, probably close to an hour, maybe over an hour, came inside screaming, instantly started slapping and punching Rich, Rich Bagan Jr. It caused a commotion. My mother, Lisa Sears, was standing there. My cousin Sabrina Callahan was standing there, and my uncle, Richard Bagan Sr., was standing there. So, as they tried to get her to walk out of the, when they tried to get Aaron to walk out of the bathroom, she had tripped over the train of her dress. She then ran outside, told the DJ, Veer Hill, who is not here, what had happened, and Veer Hill ran back inside, grabbed my 65-year-old uncle, Rich Bagan, and I tried to intervene, saying, "Hey, you don't want to get a felony tonight. Calm down." At that same moment, the dog was let out of the crate by Barbara Newman. The dog ran around the crate, jumped up to me, and everybody started screaming, "Matthew, Matthew, the dog, the dog." And I knew that the dog was right behind us. I did not realize that the dog was attached to me because there was so much going on. Veer's a very tall guy, huge, like six foot five, 200-plus pounds. My uncle is a very short man, so I was trying to be like, "Hey, please don't punch my uncle, Rich Bagan, please." From there, the dog was latched onto me for about seven minutes. Absolutely everybody was trying to get, was trying to get the dog off of me, and Aaron Bagan came inside, said, "Smokey, release. Smokey, release."
Matthew, or Mr. Hernan, just so I can understand what's going on here. You have this freckle, if I can call it that, few people standing around. Was anybody hitting anybody?
Oh, no. No, it was, it was, it was getting close to that.
Loud voices?
Yeah. And I just wanted to avoid, you know, it was such a good night. I didn't want anything to...
Excited atmosphere?
Yeah. I mean, there was, like, alcohol involved and everything else, too, but it was like...
Where was the dog at the beginning of all this?
The dog was in the crate at the time.
Okay. How did he get out of the crate?
Barbara Newman took him out of the crate.
Do you know why?
No clues there.
Okay. So, you're with these people, the dog. Where, how far away was the dog crate?
Probably within a matter of feet. It was, I don't really remember it being that, that long ago, but from where Veer was standing, or where Veer was standing to my uncle, the dog was probably on the back side of one of them, and then I think there was a piece of furniture there, too. Then the dog ran around and then jumped up and lashed onto my arm.
Okay. What were you doing at the time that the dog jumped up?
I had my hands outspread, saying, "Guys, stop it."
Okay. All right. Thanks. Carry on.
Okay. So, once, once the dog was latched on and Aaron was, you know, saying, "Smokey, release. Smokey, release," she, she then just walked away. She walked out outside. She sat on the porch and watched everything happen. The dog was still attached to, to my right arm, did not, did not let go. Everybody was, you know, gouging the dog's eyes, punching the dog, you know, kicking the dog, trying to get the dog off of me. The dog was starting to, like, shake his head and pull and pull and pull. And then finally, you know, thankfully, my wife, Taylor Hernan, walked in, grabbed the dog by his genitals, and ripped as hard as she possibly could and threw him back about 15 or 20 feet. At that same moment, when, when the dog broke loose from her grip, the dog came back at me as I was down on the floor assessing my injuries. At that time, my, my stepfather, Donald Sears, who was present, and my cousin's, my cousin's husband, Martin Callahan, grabbed the dog, put him in the crate, and threw the crate out of the back door where Aaron was sitting.
How long was it from the time that the dog latched onto your arm to the time it let go?
So, it was, it was just about seven minutes, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, but right around seven minutes. It felt like time, like, stood still. So, as, as, as we were assessing the injury and the dog was out of the house, I had walked into the bedroom and took off my long-sleeved shirt, button-up shirt. As soon as I pulled off the sleeve, my, my sleeve was actually, like, filling the wounds. So, as I pulled it out, blood just started spraying everywhere, all over the house, not realizing that an artery was actually nicked. So, at that, at that moment, I freaked out, and I was like, "All right, calm down. Let's, you know, I've been through enough training in the military that I can, like, stop a bleed." Thankfully, I had my IFAC that I deployed with, which is like a CLS kit, right? It can, basically, you can save a life, right? My stepfather, Donald Sears, ran out to the car, grabbed, grabbed the IFAC. I put on the tourniquet, tied it off, stopped the bleed, and then, within a matter of minutes, the EMT showed up, brought me to the hospital, and that was it. You know, from, from there, you know, it's just, it's, it's destroyed a lot for me. I was a union ironworker. I have a wife and two kids. You know, I was in, I was in the military for 12 years, and I lost my career as an ironworker, and I was discharged from the military due to the injuries because I don't have feeling in my right hand much anymore. I have damage to the ulnar nerve. The right tricep was detached from, from the bone, and it nicked the artery. I've been going to treatment off and on since, since it happened. You know, there's been, I've, I've been offered to have surgery multiple times with the, the outcome being that it's 70% to 80% not likely going to work. So, with those chances, I don't want to have to be cut open from my wrist to my armpit just to see if it does work, if there is that 20% to 30% chance that it actually will, will fix everything. I have enough scarring. I have been through enough emotional, you know, I've been through enough emotional damage for a lifetime, you know, and, you know, finally being done with the medical treatment, this was, I was, you know, basically advised by my legal team to do this, right? So...
Who's your legal team?
I do not want to comment.
Okay.
That, that information is, is had and known. So, I mean, the board has, has everything. The board has pictures and everything. So, yeah. That's it.
Okay. Attorney Cohen, do you have questions with the witness?
Yes. In a statement to the police the day after the incident, I'm reading that there's a claim that it took 15 men to unsuccessfully remove the dog, but then Mrs. Hernan, I believe, is, is the complainant's wife, used her hands to open the dog's mouth and threw the dog to the side. Now, that's not the story we've heard this evening. This evening, we, we heard that she pulled on his genitals to get his attention and then threw him to the side. And I bring this up because truth is a factor, but also because Mr. Hernan had said that it was in this movement of reaching into the dog's mouth that her cuticle may have been scratched. So, I just, I don't know what the true story is, but we now have two different stories from the complainant. So, my question is that there was, there was information told to the police the day after the incident, and there's information that was shared tonight. Which is accurate about the role of Mrs. Hernan?
Sir, that is all, all accurate. So, when there was a crowd of people trying to get the dog off of me, my wife had tried going into the dog's mouth to try to get the dog to actually, actually release. Veer, Veer Hill even got, got bit, too. There is more people trying to do more things. I, I don't even know. Like, that's, everything that has been said has been 1,000% true. I have no reason to lie about any of this, not a single reason to.
So, Mr. Hernan, just so you understand, the board is holding the hearing tonight
Absolutely.
So that they can hear what it is that you want them to hear and hear about the incident. So, if, if there's something that needs to be said about it, now's the time to tell the board, because otherwise, it's as if it didn't happen.
Okay. Yeah, no. So, that is, so, that is absolutely true, right? So, during everybody trying to get the dog off of me, my wife tried to put the, you know, tried to put her hand in the, in the dog's mouth, tried to spur open the jaw. Her cuticle was cut. When we went to the hospital, they asked her, "Do you want treatment, too?" She declined. Veer, we don't know what, what happened there. He stayed at the house, no one else. You know, it was my, my mother, my stepfather, my, my wife, and I don't know if there was anyone else there at the hospital, but, you know, that was, it's, all that is true.
I've seen in the, thank you, I've seen in the, in the medical records provided, I have that, along with the lawyers who, who are part of it, that there was a Brian Salomon, one time there was Attorney Glassman. Are either one of them part of your legal team now?
No. That is only due to Aaron having, having an exclusionary clause for that one dog, Smokey, because he has bit someone previously.
Mr. Hernan, you, you don't have to answer that question because the matter of who, if anyone, represents you in a tort claim that you may or may not have, is not relevant to the question of whether the dog bit you or whether there were mitigating circumstances. So...
Totally. Just one or two final, Attorney Bowen. So, in your testimony tonight, you don't mention that Ms. Bagan was pushed several times by her father-in-law. Is it that you were not up there at that time to see that?
I was standing there the, the entire time, helping take, take care of my cousin, Rich, the, the entire time that he was next to the toilet.
Did you stop your uncle, did you stop my client's father-in-law from pushing her?
If he had done that, yes, I would have stopped him.
Great.
But he did not. I have plenty of witnesses that can tell the same story.
And in what room or what part of the house did this occur?
When you walk up the back deck, there is a left bedroom, like, a master bedroom. Basically, every bedroom in the house was a master bedroom. The left side, like, back master bedroom, bathroom to the right. It was the room that Rich and Aaron were actually staying in, I believe, if I remember correctly. But, yeah, it was the downstairs, left, like, furthest, like, if you walk into the kitchen, there's a hallway to the left or, like, a family room, and then you go down there, there's, like, a little, like, walkway, like, foyer-type deal with, like, French doors everywhere, and then there's a bedroom with the bathroom attached. Thank you.
Questions from the board. Madam Chairman?
Not at this time, thank you.
It's like a quirk.
One or two.
I'll bet.
So, a few questions based on what I think I've seen from you. This is a lot of material, so I might have not remembered correctly where I saw something. So, apologies for that if it happens. I think you say at some point, this was the dog's third bite?
Yes.
And I can see within the record that we've received evidence about just one other bite.
Yep.
The bite that I see is the one where someone, without permission, entered, entered her home, and the dog reacted to a fight that was happening in the home. What, what is the other incident?
So, I mean, that's why I didn't put in my statement, but from what my cousin, Rich, told me, because prior to all of this, we were very close. From what he told me is that, so Aaron had posted all over Facebook that her hand had gotten caught, caught in a gate and that she had to have, like, reconstructive surgery, and, you know, there was a bunch of pictures and everything else.
I'd just would like to ask a question before he continues, but it has to do with him answering the question.
No, no, hold on. Let, let's let him answer the question.
Okay.
Presumably Cousin Rich and these other people who were on Facebook are going to be here to testify, to give us the first-person testimony. If not, well, but...
Yeah. And I think what the, what the chair is getting at is, is it your direct knowledge of this second bite, or is it something
Yes.
that you heard from someone else?
Rich and I worked together for a long time, every single day. We spent car rides together every single day, driving into work, driving home from work. We were very close. You know, once he moved, moved to Halifax with his parents, we got even, even closer. So, I would say what I was told is accurate and true.
Okay. It's still what we call, under the law, hearsay, but...
Yeah, no, no, it's, that's why I didn't want to put in, in, like, the statement because it is, it, it is hearsay. So, I wasn't sure if it could be used or not used. If it, if it can't, if it can't be used, fine, then, you know, we'll just carry on.
You didn't see it yourself.
Right.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, as, but I, I took from what he said as, you know, the truth, but, you know, it's, you know...
In circumstances like that, we take the testimony in, but then we give it the weight that we deem appropriate.
Right.
Totally fine.
Okay. So, this has sort of come up a little bit, but there is a pretty significant period of time between when this bite
Yes.
occurred and the hearing that we're having tonight.
Yes.
What you've said is that it's because of advice that you received about having your injuries treated or words like that.
Yes.
It seems like a long time.
I was told when I came in here the first time, back 2022, 2023 timeframe, that I had to be done with medical treatment to present my case to the Board of Selectmen. That's what I was told back then. So, it was whoever it was in the third floor room up there, that's what, that's what they had told me. So, I said, "Okay, totally fine. I'm not going to be done with medical treatment for quite a long time. So, once I'm done, sure, I will bring everything in here." So, hence why it's two and a half years later.
Okay. And was, was your request always that this dog found to be, be found to be a dangerous dog and be put down, or at one point were you asking for money damages?
Well, I mean, yeah, there was a lawsuit. I had lost my career. I had lost everything, you know, like, I, why should I be compensated for the, for the damages that I had, you know, received? But, you know, they were very slick and used every trick in the book not to be able to found, you know, not, to not be found liable. So, I mean, hats off to them, but, you know, I'm, I'm still, I'm still sitting here with a, you know, numb hand and, you know, trying to reinvent the wheel after, you know, I thought I had a career. So...
Did you, when you got that information, were you checking in or talking with the animal control officer or just with the select board office?
I had spoken to the animal control officer maybe once or twice, right? So, the day after the dog bite, she had taken a statement, and, you know, I gave her the full statement over the phone. I sent her pictures of the bite and everything. She wanted me to handwrite a statement to her, and in the final report, she says that I refused to write one or I refused to actually send, send one in. I had informed her that I have one hand now, right? My right hand is, I'm, you know, I can't even bend it. My, my arm, my hand doesn't work, right? I had informed her, "Hey, it's going to be a little bit hard. I can't, I can't do that," right? And it has to be written by me. So, I mean, if it's a sworn statement, it has to be written by the person, you know, swearing under oath that everything is true. I can't write with my left hand, so that's exactly why there is no written statement, but I gave her the full statement over the phone. Not to mention, I had given her a list of witnesses to speak to after the fact, multiple phone numbers, multiple names. She refused to do anything with it. My mom called maybe a few times, and, you know, she was told it wasn't needed anymore. So...
Okay. Officer Claudia is here and can speak for herself.
Totally fine.
What I believe, though, that I read in your report was not that you refused to do it, but that you didn't have... It's okay. But you can, you can speak to that later.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I don't bite.
That's like...
Don't be too sure.
Was that an appropriate comment?
You're fine. You're fine.
Yeah. No, honestly.
No, you're fine.
This, this whole thing changed my entire life. Was that an appropriate comment? Have you been?
Yeah.
We're, we're here to hear what you have to say, so...
We want to give you every chance to tell your story because we really want to know that.
Totally fine. No, totally fine. Totally fine. But there was, I mean, that was kind of out of line.
Are, do you want to say something?
Sure. Devin Cludier, Wareham Animal Control Officer. So, at the time of the incident, when I wrote my report, I did request, it's, I typically request it for any dog bite, a written statement. That does not mean written by hand. It could be typed. It could be, you know, talk to text. There's many ways to go about it now. And I had received Mr. Hernan's statement at the time of the incident. I documented our conversation that we had, and at the end of my report, I had put, you know, "Mr. Hernan emailed me photos of the bite on October 24th, but I do not have a written statement at this time." At no point did I say that Mr. Hernan had refused to give a statement. He was given, you know, an ample amount of time. That could still, the report, his written statement still could have been submitted later on and added to the report later, but I had never heard back from Mr. Hernan after that. As in regards to the witnesses not being contacted, my position is to investigate the dog bite, figure out, did the dog bite? dog bite, figure out, did the dog bite, who's at fault, things like that. And where Mrs. Bagan never stated that her dog didn't bite Mr. Hernan, there wasn't really a necessity for me to contact every single person that has been there. I'm not a judge to make liability claims or anything like that. My job is solely for the people who were involved. I did speak to Mr. Hernan's mother after the fact, and her testimony at that point wasn't necessary for my report and for my decision in the long run.
Devin, if I may.
Yes.
Do you have an opinion as to whether the dog bit?
The dog did bite, yes. So there, Mrs. Bagan never denied that the dog did bite Mr. Hernan. That wasn't, you know, even a question at the time. The dog was put on a 10-day rabies quarantine, as we do with any sort of broken skin for any injury with an animal. The dog, I didn't hold a dangerousness hearing due to the situation. So under the statute, it does protect dogs from being found dangerous in the event that they're protecting another party. And from what I was told by both parties in the situation was that there was a physical altercation, whether, you know, the statements are true, that one person was pushed, whether she tripped, whatever the case was, there was a physical altercation that was happening at the time. Everybody was heavily intoxicated, from what I was told. And it, the dog's reaction wasn't grossly disproportionate to the situation. It wasn't, you know, what we would consider mauling. It was a bite, one, I was told it was one bite, there was nothing further than that. And then the dog was contained. So in that situation, we typically don't hold a dangerousness hearing.
So you used your prosecutorial discretion as to whether to pursue the case?
Yep.
Sherri, did you have...
I'm done.
I just have one follow-up question.
Yep.
If a person is unable to write his or her name, you could have somebody else write the incident report and sign it with...
Yes. So the reports that, when I asked for a written statement, it's more for my own record-keeping. So that way, in the event with these situations, so it's not, you know, if Mr. Hernan had described something to me and I narrated it improperly in my report, it's more so it's available for anybody. It's not a sworn testimony. It's, there's nothing really official about it. Mrs. Bagan gave me her written statement via email. There's no hand signature. It's more so just to make sure, as I'm writing my report, that I'm documenting everything appropriately.
Thank you.
Other questions for the animal control officer?
Yes.
Yes.
This dog has been, this dog has been once before, you said, before this?
So I do have a report that was with the previous animal control officer, which I wasn't aware of that bite until quite a while after this initial incident. Because when we look in the police log, if it's been an animal bite, it's documented in our log as animal bite. So the previous bite was actually documented because it wasn't a response by police to the bite itself, it was a response to a break-in and entering in the home. And in that situation, I do have that report available, too. That was with the previous animal control officer who responded to that. And the dog wasn't found to be dangerous at that point either, due to, again, the statute protecting a dog from being found dangerous if the party is involved in a physical altercation, which that first dog bite was. It was a physical altercation between two males and Mrs. Bagan, as well as an unwanted guest within the home.
When was the date of that occurrence? Was there another one?
That was...
2017, I think.
March 2017, March 14th, 2017.
Okay. Was there another one about, did I read?
There was one other incident that was in here during a walk, and that was, again, the previous animal control officer back in 2016, if I'm not mistaken. And that situation, there was no documentation of the significance of the bite. From the report that was written, it's nothing that, you know, in my experience, I, I mean, she didn't find the dog dangerous at that point. There was no documentation of the bite. There was no medical treatment that was attached to the report. There was nothing. So as far as I know, that broken skin could have been, you know, a nip, it could have been a scratch. I don't have the personal experience of that situation to give any sort of opinion on that.
Okay. How many, how many other animal complaints has there been for this owner?
So none involving her dog, and that's what we're here for today.
Okay. That's it.
Hi. I don't know if you can answer this question, and the first one is because I'm bad at math. So in 2017, Smokey, the dog in question, was four years old.
Um, I'm not 100%. Let me double check.
Perhaps we could do the math backwards by telling me how old the dog is today?
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah. So I think Mrs. Bagan stated to me previously that the dog is around 13 today.
And do you know how much the dog weighs today?
I do not. When I saw Smokey to release the quarantine in 2022, I would say Smokey was roughly about 50 to 60 pounds.
Okay. All right, thank you. No more questions.
So what is your, I mean, it appears that although justified, maybe in your opinion, that there are, you know, several bites here, what is your recommendation going forward?
So given the circumstances, I don't have a recommendation. That's why I have not brought it before the board. The two main incidents that have been brought up today with Smokey and the dog bites, the two significant ones that we have, have been in a response to, again, a physical altercation where the dog was protecting, you know, and from, I guess, the dog's perspective, protecting another party within the home, which is protected under the statute for dangerousness.
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I do have another question. In your opinion, and I guess I need everybody to tell me if this is accurate or not, do we, are we to take into consideration the severity of the damage done by the bite? Is that part of something we can consider?
Yes. So the statute does say that as long as the bite is not grossly disproportionate to the situation, which is why I did mention, you know, it wasn't what we would consider a mauling, you know? And it's not to take away from the medical treatment that Mr. Hernan has had to receive since then. But as for, you know, that is unfortunately poor positioning of the bite. You know, it's not to say that the dog acted out in a way that was grossly disproportionate to the situation. It was one bite that was released. It wasn't, you know, a significant mauling, you know, that could have been to, if it was to the calf, you know, maybe Mr. Hernan would have had a different medical outcome. But the actual wounds that I saw, that I have photos of, were punctures. It wasn't tears, it wasn't, you know, parts, not to be, you know, too in-depth, but, you know, pieces of flesh ripped off or anything like that.
They were punctures?
Yes.
But would you say they were pretty severe punctures?
They were significant. But for a dog that size, it's not. That's what's to be expected.
So to what you just said, a dog that size, I have a good friend who has, and I'm bad at guessing weights and everything, but this dog is pure muscle. And my friend is a professional, prize-winning bodybuilder.
Yep.
And her dog was trying to attack my dog, and it took every single strength she had to get this young dog off of mine. No damage was done. And into his crate.
Yes.
I couldn't have done that. It was astonishing. It was like athletic prowess this dog had. So it's amazing.
Yeah. No, and I agree. The other thing that the statute does protect dogs under for dangerousness is it can't be based on breed of the dog. So the unfortunate reality is, you know, a 10-pound dog wouldn't have caused the same kind of damage that a 50-pound dog would have. The bite would have been the same response, you know, if we're talking the same response from each size of dog. It just wouldn't have been the same outcome.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board for the animal control officer? I want to give the parties a chance to ask questions.
All right. So in the statute, does it say anything about, like, you know, under the protection clause, right? Does it say, like, who the dog can protect, right? If it's like the owner or if it's just like a generalized, like it's anybody there?
Yeah, I did print out a copy of the statute as well, so I can read it. It says the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic animal or a person from attack or assault. It does not specify who that person could have been in the time of it.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask one question real quick?
Just, I'm starting, anything else?
No.
Just one question. Which, what were your hands, what position were they in when you were bit? Okay.
They were up and trying to defuse. There was no active, like, it wasn't, people weren't being pushed, people weren't being punched. It was more so like, you know, Veer walked in all aggressive, you know, and he just like grabbed him. And I was like, hey, I was like, come on, you know, like, he's, he's a senior citizen. You're going to get a felony, right? Like, think, make some sense out of this. When the dog bit me, there was no one in the dog's family there. So it's like, you know, who is the dog protecting? You know what I mean? But then again, the statute is the statute. So, you know, it's very unfortunate, but that's just, you know, how it is.
Tony Cohen, did you have questions for the animal control officer?
I do, thank you. Good evening, Officer Claudia.
Aye.
How many dangerous dogs have you, hearings have you participated in?
I don't know an exact number. I would say it's not a super common thing that we request. We don't typically have a lot of them come up, but, you know, enough that I feel pretty comfortable.
And pretty comfortable in making a recommendation?
Yes, yeah.
And as part of your training to be an animal control officer, do you receive any training about dangerous dogs and dangerous dog investigations?
Not necessarily. I mean, it's pretty baseline. Every department, you know, and every town has their own procedures and how they handle dog bites and situations. You know, there's not any formality that states, you know, there's a certain number of bites that have to happen, that there's a certain, there's no black and white guideline in requesting them.
What training do you have to assess a dog's behavior?
I'm, I don't.
Here, you've, have you encountered dogs previously who are dangerous and who may need to be euthanized?
Yes. And I have requested that before the board before. As for my behavioral training, I don't necessarily have any formal, you know, schooling to say that I've gone for behaviorist. But we do, you know, prior to this, I do have an extensive animal background, working with dogs and understanding their behavior. And there is, you know, the baseline training for reading a dog's behavior that you're given in the Animal Control Officer Academy.
And you've, you've had an opportunity to essentially look at all three instances, correct? That we're talking about, there was whatever this thing in 2016 was, but then 2017 bite, and then 2022.
I did, I reviewed the report from the previous animal control officer for the 2016 and 2017 bites and viewed the photos. And then I was obviously present for this most recent.
And earlier you asked a question or given an analogy about some strong dog that was difficult to control, but this dog, right? This dog, by these puncture wounds, I believe that the statement that was being promoted was that this dog by you, this dog showed bite inhibition, that this dog had the opportunity, right? Given the circumstances, to bite, retreat, come back, or to bite worse or more harmful. But this dog in particular, at that bite for 2022, is it your opinion that the bite, the dog showed bite inhibition? And if so, can you just describe that?
So bite inhibition is a term that can be a little funky, because generally, when you're talking about, you know, training dogs for bite inhibition, it's usually like in a play instance where, you know, you're teaching them not, you're teaching them bite inhibition, so they don't bite too hard. They bite more gentle, based on the circumstances. But in the sense of the dog self-correcting, you know, I, I guess I can't really testify to that, where I wasn't there. But based on the report, I mean, like I stated, it was one bite. He did say that the dog came back towards him. Unfortunately, I don't have that in my original statements that I received from anybody in my report. But, you know, the bite itself, typically, I mean, I've seen some pretty significant bites with dogs where that one bite can result in, you know, tearing of flesh, more severe tears as pulling them off, things like that. So it's, you know, kind of up for, up for debate in that regard.
Okay. And in 2022, you were an animal control officer?
Yes.
And you quarantined the dog for rabies?
Yep, as per the state guidelines.
And did Ms. Bagan comply with the quarantine?
Yep.
Prior to this incident, were there any other orders in place about Smokey that you're aware of?
Nope.
And you've said, in your report, you surmise that 2017 and 2020 bites would not be sufficient to deem Smokey as a dangerous dog. And you say that after having reviewed everything that's been made available to the board?
Yes.
And you've talked about under the statute that the dog, it can't be deemed dangerous if its response, here, a protection response, was, if its response, the dog's response was not grossly disproportionate to the threat.
Yes.
And you mentioned that we look at that through the statute, through the perception of the dog, correct?
More than just the perception of the dog, it's kind of the perception of the situation. But even as a third party coming into this and being given, you know, the statements from Mr. Hernan and Mrs. Bagan, I don't feel that it was grossly disproportionate. I mean, both parties stated that there was, you know, a significant amount of alcohol involved, people were very upset, there was, you know, at some point, physical altercations, whether that's between Mrs. Bagan and her husband, if it was between Mr. Bagan Senior and Mrs. Bagan, there was an altercation that was happening. So even from a third party walking into it, it's, you know, I wouldn't be surprised that a dog would get involved.
Okay. And having digested all of the information here, you've learned that in 2017, Ms. Bagan was the victim of a, well, you even put of a break-in and entering and assault.
Yep.
Because she was in her bedroom and somebody unauthorized came into her house and went to attack her or her boyfriend at the time, right?
Yep. And the photos of that bite from that instance were also not grossly disproportionate to the situation.
And at that time, Ms. Bagan, which we'll hear testimony, was afraid for her life. And this dog, at that time, he protected her and he bit, he bit the perpetrator.
Yep.
And then we don't have anything happening for nearly 2,000 days, from 2017 to 2022.
Correct.
And the next incident on record, then, is another incident where a male is close or pushing or touching the dog owner, and again, the dog is right there. So his behavior in 2022, is, was it similar? Is it a pattern based on what happened in 2017?
I would say it's similar. I can't necessarily say if it's a pattern or not. You know, who's to say that arguments haven't happened in the home with Mrs. Bagan and her husband, that the dog hasn't responded that way? So I wouldn't necessarily call it a pattern. I would say that the response is similar and appropriate, well, unfortunately, to the situation.
And the idea that from 2017 to 2022, aside from the incident with the person who went into the house, there were, there were no reports, no bites, nothing, no complaints, not even dog on dog.
I haven't even had a loose dog complaint involving that dog in the, all those years.
And then from 2022 incident to today, 885 days, we haven't had, you haven't had an incident or a report of the dog biting anybody or having a problem with another dog?
No reports for that dog at all.
And then in the record, we learned that Ms. Bagan broke up, was able to get the dog removed from, from... from, from the victim by pulling up on the dog's rear legs, she states. So that's a maneuver that is extremely, I think it's a sophisticated move for a pet owner to know to do that and have the presence of mind to do that.
You said, who removed the dog?
Ms. Bagan and the DJ, they each grabbed a leg, back rear legs of the dog and pulled the dog back. That's what's in the record?
In Mrs. Bagan's report, that's what she had stated to me at the time, the only real description.
Excuse me. Excuse me one second. The people in this room will be addressed through Mr. Bowen. There is to be no side noise in this room at all. This is a legal proceeding and it will be conducted in a business manner. And if you do not comply with those requests, you will be asked to leave this room.
Mr. Hernan, you had an objection?
Oh, yeah, so.
So tell us what your objection is.
Okay, so regarding the statement that, you know, Erin and Veer got the dog off of me, that is a complete lie. Erin had left the house.
Well, I'll tell you, hold on. That, that's not an objection, that's.
Argument, I don't know.
No, no, it's not an argument, it's testimony that would contradict what was being said. And we'll give you a chance to give that. If you had a legal objection, I wanted to make sure you had a chance to, to make that, but we'll give you a chance to tell us what you want to tell us.
Could I, sorry, make one comment in regards to that? So I do just want to stay with my report. My report is not to determine exactly, like, I'm not the judge reviewing everything. My reports are to document what each party has stated to me. Unfortunately, you know, without being there, I can't definitively say anything.
So do we have any other questions?
One other question. Well, I didn't get an answer to the wheelbarrow and question, but it's fine. Having sat here tonight and heard the testimony of Mr. Hernan, the victim, is there anything that he shared this evening that would change your opinion about whether, your opinion that, that Smokey is not a dangerous dog?
No, so unfortunately, you know, like I had stated before, you know, it's an unfortunate situation, the, everything that's kind of come from it afterwards, but the actual act of the bite was not something that I would consider dangerous. As a significant bite with significant injuries and lasting injuries, of course, but it doesn't change the behavior temperament of the dog to, that I would deem that dog dangerous.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Mr. Hernan, do you have an opportunity to call witnesses?
Yeah, absolutely, please. I just have one, one comment, right? So regardless of, you know, how, how the situation happened, right? Like Erin was not physically in the room when the dog bit me, right? So, you know, if my, my uncle, who was accused of pushing her, that didn't happen in the same room as the dog, the dog was in a crate covered with a blanket. So the dog was let out because there was someone against the crate, right? So it was like, as Veer picked up my uncle and like moved him, the dog crate was, was right there. So there was no way for the dog to see what was going on, and the dog just walked out and just acted on that. Like, there's, there's, there's no sense, the dog could have ran away, the dog could have done many different things, and unfortunately, I was, I was just there standing in the middle. So, I don't know, that just doesn't make, it doesn't make any, any sort of sense to me, right? I have a 220-pound cane corso, right? The biggest, strongest dog that I've ever seen. He is, he would, you know, it is actually a proven fact that cane corso's have a stronger bite than a lion, right? They can crush bones. That dog is a teddy bear. When, when, when we're playing around, when we're, you know, wrestling with my kids or anything else, his first action or his first reaction isn't to like attack me or attack anybody, you know? He has never laid a tooth on absolutely anybody. There's never been an issue with him, right? So I just don't see how like there's a pattern of, or, you know, I would, I would call it a pattern, right? There's three, three incidents, right? You know, the first time wasn't actually documented really, you know, there was like nothing to it. The second time, regardless, like, yes, understood someone, it's a, it's a break-in and entering. Me, just being a casualty to the situation, right? Just being the one person trying to stop any sort of craziness from actually happening, and then that's the dog's reaction. There was no one going after the dog, there was no one doing anything to the dog for him to react like that.
Counsel. I think it, my, my objection here is each time that this victim has a statement, it becomes our question, it's just, we're never going to get out of here, he's made, he's repeating his points, and he's going, and I think some of this is going far afield of, is this dog, Smokey, a dangerous dog or not?
I can answer that.
And, and another thing is this, these, if we keep having these intermittent comments, I just think in the interest of time and getting to the right answer, we're not going to get there tonight. And while I believe he should be heard, I will point out that every answer he's had tonight has been an answer that only favors him and that he has the only accurate story. So I don't think we have to keep hearing that repeated, and I think we should get some other facts.
Sir, I was the only one affected by the dog.
Hold on, right there. It's the nature of testimony that witnesses usually tell the story that they want to tell. And it's, will be up to the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, pardon me, to determine whether or not any particular testimony should be relied upon. Mr. Hernan, you said that you had some witnesses, so let's hear from your witnesses.
Absolutely, please. Lisa Sears, come on up.
Ma'am, what I'll ask you to do is just state and spell your name for the record.
Sure.
We won't play the Perry Mason game and cross-examine you, at least I won't. Just tell us what you want the board to hear.
Sure, no problem. Hello, everybody. My name is Lisa Bagan Sears. I am the mother of Matthew Hernan, and I am the aunt of Erin Bagan's husband, Richard Bagan. My brother, Richard Bagan Senior, that we had been talking about earlier, he didn't want to come to this tonight, so. I just wanted to say, I'm going to start this out in the beginning, okay? I am an EMT, all right, before anybody has anything. Are you sure you know? Yes, I am. I am a medical assistant, I am an alcohol drug counselor. So therefore, on October 22nd, 2022, I was not drinking. I don't drink, I don't like to drink, I don't like it. There was a scuffle, whereas Erin Bagan could not find her husband at their second wedding, and she came in and he had been drinking, like, all morning, all day. And she came in and I had just came back from CVS, I got some charcoal pills because Rich was really, really drunk. So he had thrown up a few times, we were getting him to his bed, Erin came in and said, nine years, Rich, nine years, Rich, nine years, Rich, and she's punching him in the face. My brother, Richard Bagan Senior, said, we're not having that, so stop, go, go, go. And she was going out the door, he slammed the door, her train was in the door. She was, like, dramatically fell, and the dog was not in there at that point. The dog was nowhere around. I don't know if the dog was outside or whatever. So she went out and told Veer Hill, he hit me. So of course Veer Hill, being her friend at that point, said, this can't happen. So he came in there and he pushed my brother, Richard Bagan Senior, on top of me, I hit the dog crate, my brother landed on top of me, all right? The dog was not in the crate at that point because Barbara had taken, Barbara, I can't even remember her last name, she had taken the dog out of the crate, for what reason, I don't know. But when we did arrive at the wedding that day, Smokey, or she likes to call him Smoke Show, he's always had a problem with biting other people. So why was this dog at the wedding? And I was told by my nephew, we can't leave the dog there with the other dogs and a babysitter because the dog will attack the babysitter. So I'm like, so you put him in a wedding? So, can I have my papers, please?
At this point, I'm going to just interject. Can we just get to the incident and whether this dog at that moment was a dangerous dog or not? This is, this is dredging up things which I would prefer the board not go into with this family feud that's been going on for years. And just the characterization of, of Ms. Bagan, just the mocking of her, it's just not necessary? I also would point out, an EMT is not trained to determine whether or not a dog is dangerous. So I would ask, please stick, please stick to the.
This is dangerous. This is dangerous. This is my son's.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Yeah, excuse you, who's right. So, your objection is noted.
Thank you.
We're going to allow the witness to continue with the testimony. Focus on the attack, if you would.
Absolutely. I can do that for you, sure.
Go ahead.
So, like I said, the dog was not in the crate, I fell in the crate, my brother fell on top of me. The dog had already been taken out of the crate by Barbara. Erin Bagan came running out, told Veer Hill, Veer Hill was like, oh, I'm going to kill him or whatever, I don't know about my brother. My brother did not push her. She had a big stupid poofy dress and it got caught in the door when he shut it. So there was no way that, you know, she wasn't gonna like at least get, you know, pulled by the door when it shut.
How does this train of the dress?
That's why she said my brother.
Why does that have anything to do with whether the dog didn't, didn't attack?
That's what started the whole incident, is she told everybody that my brother, whose 65-year-old brother, had attacked her, all right? And then Rich Junior was asleep in the bed, like miserable, behind him. My son came out, put his hands on the doorframe of the, one right and left of the doorframe, and he's like, whoa, 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 whoa. Put his hands there because he didn't want Veer to go into the bedroom after my brother. Smokey came from, I don't know where, but he came up and he launched, all right? And hung there for what I want to say, seven or eight minutes. This is where the EMT part comes in. Once we had him released and my daughter-in-law tried, and she was trying to get her hand in the mouth, we poked him in the eyes, my son fell. And it's like, Mom, I'm going to die, Mom, I'm going to die. And as an EMT, it's like, oh crap, you know what? Blood, because the dog had hit in the brake wheel, the brake wheel, and it was shooting, and it was hitting the ceiling, the walls, the floor, the furniture, all right? So after Veer had seen kind of what had happened, he was trying to help get the dog. I put my knee up like this, because soon as my son fell, that dog was coming back, and I put my leg out, and he went after my inner thigh, and that's when I don't know who came and pulled that dog away. I was sober as a judge, I wouldn't lie to anybody, this dog is dangerous. I know for a fact that Erin Bagan had gotten bit by her own dog, because we had talked about it over Facebook, because she had gotten, hit in the tendon or something, and she was going to the martial arts, the pound or something around here, I don't know. And she couldn't do that for a while, and we were commiserating with her, you know, feel better, we understand what happens, dog's a dog. And yes, that dog does bite, and that dog scared the crap out of everybody. I have had to go to counseling because when I close.
Okay, let's focus on the incident.
But when I close my eyes at night, I see this.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Your counseling is not the subject of this hearing?
No, absolutely not, but you know what?
Is there any other evidence that you'd like to offer to us?
Yeah, I just, I would like to ask even the dog officer, you know, what is the relationship? No? No, I just.
You have other, other evidence that you want to offer to the board?
Yes.
Okay.
The dog is dangerous, and the dog kept coming back at him, all right? And that's what I'm trying to say, but, I mean, I feel like this is pretty much a done deal anyway. I honestly do.
Counsel, questions for the witness?
I would just ask, why would you feel this is a done deal?
All right, that's not.
I just, we're not there.
The lady's entitled to her opinion, just leave it there.
Then.
If that was all you had, you're excused.
Yes.
Mr. Hernan, your next witness.
Now, may I ask, can I ask her a question or not?
If you'd like.
Well, she says she put her leg up and didn't get bitten.
No, somebody, like I just said, that somebody grabbed that dog right before, was like that with his mouth.
So you did not get bitten?
I did not get bitten, no.
Thank you, that's all I want to know.
No, absolutely not.
Would be delightful, did anyone else have questions for the witness?
No.
Mr. Hernan, do you have another witness?
Yeah, um, Donald Sears.
I'm going to remind you, because Mr. Bowen apparently has not been able to control this, you are to speak about the issue of the specific incident that we are here to discuss, nothing else. And if you can't keep it that way, then I will jump in and ask you to leave.
Okay. Madam Chairman?
Yep.
Sorry.
Now, I'm going to correct you. The defense in this case is that there was an animated atmosphere, and what the witnesses have been testifying to is the animated atmosphere. And while the witnesses may express themselves with passion or perhaps even with less civility than we might care for, they're entitled to tell us what they need to tell us.
Yes, sir, I.
That's a different matter.
I, I absolutely hear you on that. However, there has been a lot of.
Let's have our witness testify. Sir, give us your name, please, and tell us what you want the board to hear.
My name is Donald Sears. I'm Lisa Sears' husband, Matthew's stepdad. On the night in question, I literally, I walked in the, Lisa came and got me, I walked in the back room to where Rich was on the floor and helped Big Rich pick Little Rich up, put him on the bed. She came in, I'm sorry, Rich's wife came in and started pounding on him. My brother-in-law, Rich Senior, kind of, just, just get out of here and close the door. Her dress got caught in the door, she started screeching that her dress was caught in the door, he opened the door back up, she went face-first. That's what my wife was talking about. Once, she went out the door and walked out onto the deck and spoke to Veer, I don't know what she said, but she spoke to Veer. Veer came back in, all in a tiff, and went right after Rich Senior. The dog was in the crate, somebody went over at some point, I don't know exactly when, but somebody went over and opened the, opened the door of the crate, the dog got out. Veer went after, went after Rich Senior and went to grab him. When he did, Rich Senior went backwards, because this was like a step. Rich Senior went backwards, landed on my wife, who landed on the dog crate. And while all this is going on, the dog came back around the backside of me, and I was facing Matthew, Veer, and Rich, they were in the doorway, and that's what she was talking about, the doorway. It was like a really weird alcove. The dog came after Matthew. Taylor, Matthew's wife, Taylor Hernan, about knocked me over trying to get to the dog as the dog was latching on to Matthew. She put her hands right in his mouth and started pulling it, and I'm just standing there like, I don't know what to do. I, it took me a split second and I realized, I got to get the dog off him. I pulled the dog, I grabbed the dog by the legs, and I went to pull the dog back, I couldn't, could not get the dog to release. In the meantime, Marty Callahan, my niece's husband, came around the corner, he's a lot bigger than I am, he and I grabbed the dog, and at the same time, Taylor grabbed the dog's genitals. The dog let go, we threw the dog backwards. When the dog went flying backwards, it belonged with me. And the dog went to go back after my wife, and, because she was standing between Matthew and the dog. And Marty grabbed the dog by the legs again and flung him backwards again. At no point did I see, she was out on the deck the whole time, because I went, kept, I went over the door at one point and I'm like, what is, what are you doing? And she just sat there. It wasn't anything she was going to be involved in, so.
Anything else about the attack?
No, other than, I mean, the only other thing was that the, the Wayham police showed up, they wouldn't even come in the house because the dog was still running around, because at that point, nobody could get the dog to go back in the crate. And if the Wayham police were scared to go in the house about a dog, then, I mean, just kind of tells me I don't want to be there. I don't want this dog running around, so.
Questions, counsel?
Yes, how much did you had to drink that day?
Me? I think I probably had about three or four drinks.
And how about Matthew?
Matthew probably had upwards to seven or eight, because he was one of the groomsmen in the wedding party, and they were doing shots and everything else, so.
And during the, this is after the actual?
Yes.
Okay, so the wedding party was outside, the bulk of the party was outside?
Yes.
During the party, did you see Smokey? Was Smokey part of the party?
The only time I saw Smokey is when people would, like Matthew was saying, they were walking him around so he could go to the bathroom and stuff, and then they put him back in, put him back in the crate.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from the board? Jared? I'm just, want to clarify something. So Smokey was in the crate before the fight started?
Yes.
All right. No?
Not, not according to our position, but.
All right, we'll hear from the witness on that.
Smokey was in the, well, prior to the fight, Smokey was in the, there was like, this, this whole thing happened in an area about the size of this room. Smokey was in the, well, prior to the fight, Smokey was in the, there was like, this, this whole thing happened in an area about the size of this room, alright? The doorway was there, the living room was here. Smokey's crate was over in the living room in front of the fireplace with a thing draped over it. And at some point, prior to the fight, Smokey was let out. I don't know who let her out, who let the dog out of the crate. I don't know why the dog was let out of the crate. All I know is the dog just appeared behind me.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Thank you, sir, you're excused. Mr. Hernan, any other witnesses?
Uh, Taylor Hernan. Uh, yeah, Sabrina Callahan.
Hi.
Afternoon, ma'am.
My name is Sabrina Callahan. I am the cousin of Matthew Hernan and the cousin of Rich Bagan, Erin's husband. And I did not drink one drink at the wedding. And I was in the kitchen. My cousin Richie had already gone to bed. Everybody had been checking on him. I checked on him a few times, blah, blah, blah. Erin was outside dancing, having a great time. Everything was good. She knew that he had gone in and, because he excused himself. Everything was great. And there was just a few of us left. I was in the kitchen with my aunt, um, her mother-in-law, Erin's mother-in-law. I was in the kitchen with her and Erin came inside with this look on her face of horror. She was disgusted and very upset. And she ran to, walked to the bedroom. She was definitely, had been drinking. She walked to the-
I told you about the dog attack part?
Yeah, well, that's where I'm getting at.
Okay, well.
She had walked to the bedroom and that whole incident had happened. That part, I wasn't in, but I did hear her voice yelling at him.
Okay.
I did not see that part.
She, she wasn't a witness to the-
Um, actually, I was, because-
Let her testify.
But she just said she wasn't a witness to the incident.
A witness to Erin hitting him. I was not in the bedroom. I was in the living room at that point.
Alright, we're wasting time.
So my cousin Matt-
Tell us, tell us what you saw.
I saw her fall down from the door getting closed. I saw her get the guy, the DJ, and tell the DJ that my uncle had hit her, pushed her, and which did not happen. And I also saw the DJ come up and he pushed my uncle. My husband, Martin Callahan, got behind the DJ and grabbed him and held on to him so that he could not push my uncle anymore.
Let's get to the dog part.
And, yep. And in that moment, I was, the dog was, my cousin was right there. I was standing about right here. And that dog latched on to my cousin as fast as he could. And I didn't know where he came from. I didn't even know he had a cage. I didn't know the dog was even at the wedding. But that dog did come latching at my son, I mean, at my cousin. And my cousin was screaming and trying, everybody was trying to get the dog off. I tried to think of what I could do. I didn't know what to do. I couldn't, I didn't, I knew not to touch a dog that's trying to bite somebody. But what I, what I saw was really bad. I mean, my cousin, like, that dog was holding on. And Erin was not there. She had already walked away. And after the dog finally let go and everything was, I went to save my cousin. But Erin had taken the dog to the back room, like, out in the deck to coddle it and let it know that it was okay. And never came back to check on my cousin, nothing. She was gone with the dog.
Thank you. Questions, counsel?
Yes. When Matthew Hernan was still, was Matthew Hernan doing anything when, uh-
He was just trying to break it up without, without physical, physical contact with anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Questions from the board?
I, I just have one. Is the DJ related to anybody?
Um, he is her friend, that's all I know.
But no relation? Thank you.
No, yep.
Jared?
I did not.
And you, you don't know how long the, the dog had been out?
Um, the only thing I can tell you for sure is that I did not know there was a dog there. And when I was in the kitchen with my aunt, at some point, I saw the dog walk by and I said, "Oh, they have a dog." And that was the first time I saw the dog. And that happened probably within 30 seconds of that whole thing happening, so, yep.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hernan, anyone else?
Yep, Taylor Hernan.
I'm Taylor. I'm Matthew's wife. I was at the wedding. So, cutthroat. I'm the one who got the dog off of Matthew by grabbing him by his genitals. And that was the only way the dog would unlatch from Matthew. The do, so, prior to that, the dog was let out of his crate by, I don't even know Erin's friend's name. Even though I've been listening this whole time, it's just been chaos. She let him out of the crate, Smokey, and Matthew was trying to break up the fight. Verbal altercation, there was no fists, no hands, nothing put on Erin by Rich Bagan Senior. So, the dog was unprovoked and, not to mention, Erin was nowhere to be found. She actually, after I got the dog-
I object. We don't know, we don't care where Erin was. We care about what the dog did.
Please let her, let her finish.
Please stop.
No.
You're interrupting me.
Okay, both of you, stop. No, both of you stop. Finish your testimony.
Thank you. Um, so, when the dog bit Matthew, can you, can he get out?
Please finish your testimony.
I can't, it's a distraction. She told, she said to everyone in this room that if-
Are you done with your testimony?
No, I'm not. But I don't want to be rudely interrupted.
I'm telling you, please finish your testimony. This is your opportunity to tell us.
Okay. So, after I got the dog off of Matthew, the dog tried coming back. Meanwhile, Erin is facing the, the window of the, um, the living room where this is all happening, like, where all the action is happening. Not a care in the world. She's just watching it all unfold while her dog is running rampant through the house. While people are screaming because there's blood everywhere that Matthew was attacked by a dog. And I'm on the phone with the police. They wouldn't come in, inside. We had to rush outside. He had to get in an ambulance and go to Toby Hospital with a tourniquet on. And nobody cared. Not Erin or, or Erin Bagan or Rich Bagan Junior. Nothing.
Thank you.
And the, the wounds that Matthew had succumbed, they're not just puncture wounds, they're scars. They ruined his arm. He can't, he can't do anything with his hand, his arm, without things just falling out of his hands.
Anything else, ma'am?
No.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Are you aware that Matthew told the ER doctor that this bite was provoked?
I was sitting right next to him, so no, it was not provoked.
My question is, are you aware that Matthew told the ER doctor that the bite was provoked?
He didn't say any of that.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I just have a clarifying question for you. You said that you grabbed the dog and pulled it off. And it apparently backed up, and then you said it came back?
I said, a lot of people said the same thing as I-
No, but I'm just asking you to-
So I grabbed the dog-
Yes.
-by its genitals and got the dog off of Matthew after I had put my hands in his mouth. Let me clarify that. I put my hands into the dog's mouth first-
Okay.
-to see if I could pry the dog's mouth open. No, the dog would not release. So I grabbed him by his genitals and that's when the dog quick-released off. And then I threw him back. And then, whatever events happened after that, I, the dog was coming back after Matthew.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Yes.
I don't remember her name.
Was it at the time of the fight?
I, all I can remember is someone walking by the crate, opening it, and then it was, her name was Barb, Barbara. I think that's what I can recall from Matthew saying.
I have a question somewhat for you, but also for Officer Devon. I've heard the pronouns she and he tonight. Is the dog a male or a female?
It's male.
And Officer Cloutier, is there, sorry, I know I'm pronouncing your name. Is there a difference in the protectiveness with the male or a female? So it's the male. Is a male more protective than a female, female would have been? Is this a factor?
No. So, I mean, dogs are like people. Each dog has their own individual personality. There are some things that could be contributed to, like, breed behavior, herding, things are gonna be with herding dogs, you know, things like that. But there's really no difference between male and female. It's just dependent on the dog itself.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Sir, do you have any other witnesses you'd like to offer?
Uh, no, that is it, sir.
Okay.
Attorney Bowen?
Sir.
Before you move on to the defense side to ask questions and witnesses, is it possible to have Mr. Hernan come back up? I just have a couple of questions.
If you'd like, sure.
Thank you. First, you know, it's the first time tonight and we're an hour and a half in. Let me start by saying thank you for your service. But I have, I just have some questions because I, I wanna try to clarify some things because in the, I don't know, 100 and- 70-some-odd pages of documents that were sent to the board, there were a couple of things that, you know, maybe I missed it, but I, I did have a chance to kinda ask a couple of questions to others that had a chance to review the file that you had sent. One of the things that you mentioned is, well, let me start with this. What was your, what was your last rank with, with the, with the Army?
I was a Specialist E4.
You were Specialist E4. How long were you in for?
12 years.
12 years. Did you serve any tours overseas?
Uh, yes, I did. 2015, 2016, we went to Kuwait and I, Iraq. So, that was, uh, like the, like the one tour that I did.
And how many, how many units? Were you with the same unit for the entire 12 years or were you with different units?
I was with different companies. First, I, I started off with the 10-5-8 Transportation in Hingham. And then I had gone to the 10-60th Transportation in Framingham. I had done multiple activations throughout the state. I had, uh, I worked for recruiting and retention up at State Headquarters in Hanscom. I, man, I worked for recruiting a few times. One time, I saved a woman's life in Quincy. Got national recognition for, for that one. I, I don't know, I've, I've been, I've been around the block a little bit, so it was, uh, you know, I planned on doing 20 years, you know, that's why I was at, at 12, and I wanted to keep on going. But, you know, with the Army changing the regulation on the PT tests over the past, past couple of years, it goes from like the normal PT to the ACFT. It's a job, job-specific PT test now, right? So, being in transportation, there's different standards as to, say, like a cook, right? So like, we have to do like deadlifting, we have to do, you know, like the shuttle sprints and everything else, right? All of the physical arm workouts that I had to do, I could not do. So I was placed on a permanent profile until I was done with my med treatment. And then, when I got the decision to get the surgery, whether it be, you know, it was going to fix anything or not, it was decided at, at that point, like, hey, you know, instead of being a stagnant soldier, just sitting around doing absolutely nothing, do you wanna, you know, discharge? And I was like, well, is there anything else I could do? There's, without a doubt, throughout any MOS that I could think of, there was nothing I could do that the PT test was gonna be at such a minimal, you know, standard for me. So, I, I didn't really have a choice at that point, other than either, you know, just get out or keep on going. But I couldn't, couldn't do it, so.
So, so they gave you, so they gave you kind of like some options potentially of some, some changes that you could have made in your service in order to continue with the military?
They did give me the options, but it was more so whether I got the surgery or not. But, you know, with the 70 to 80% like failure rate, I didn't wanna risk that. So it was more so like, you know, rather than be scarred even more than I am, I'm not willing to risk that, right? Like, I have, I have twins due within like the next week or two. Like, my, I'm afraid that I'm only gonna be able to hold one at a time where like, you know, this arm always, you know, twitches and drops things and everything else. So, there is nothing that the military could have done for me to keep, keep me in. So it was a medical discharge under non-duty-related, like injuries, I guess you could say.
So, um, so this leads me to my, my next question. In the 170-some-odd documents that you sent, how come you didn't send us your discharge documents just to, to show us exactly why you were discharged?
I thought the files were in there. Honestly, from, from like the paperwork that I, that I'd sent, sent to the attorney. That was like one of the last things that I sent to, what is it? Um, geez, I forget the lawyer's name. But, um, that was like the last thing that I, that I sent there. I, I do have the documentation if I, if I can actually show you guys. That, I'd be totally fine to bring it up, print it out real quick or something. But yeah, that's, I, I do have the documentation for it.
And you're, you also, so, I assume that, did you have, so with the union, your union civilian job?
Yes.
Uh, because I assume with the, with the Army, were you, you weren't full-time active? Were you a reserve?
Uh, guard.
National Guard, you were guard, okay. So you, so with your civilian job, did they, did they let you go because you weren't able to perform duties? What was the, what was the separation of that? Because none of that was in there either.
Yeah, so that was more of like a, it was like a sit-down conversation, basically, right? You know, it's the union, they handle things completely different than like the normal world. So, when I had spoken to my business agent and the apprenticeship coordinator, I had, I had told them like, hey, I just got attacked by a dog. You know, I'm not gonna be able to work until I'm healed. I didn't know what healing was at that point in October. They said, "Totally fine. Keep on, keep on coming to class and, you know, we'll just, you know, we'll figure it out." As class went on and I started missing class because I had doctor's appointments all the time at Mass General, they basically said, "Hey, why don't you pull out? We will leave the door open for you and when you think you are ready, you can come back." I said, "Totally fine. I totally respect that. Thank you, because I'm just, I'm holding a spot in the class that someone else could use. Uh, I'm paying dues and can't, can't work and, you know, a fresh start. We'll be totally fine." July of '22, I tried going back to work. I-
In July of?
2022. I was, uh, it was like July, I, I wanna say it was like July 2nd and 3rd. Yeah, July 2nd, and then I went back probably the 5th or 6th also. So I, I worked two days.
Of what, of what year?
Uh, 2022. Actually, no, 2023, because that would have been after the new year.
Okay, because you're, I'm confused because the attack didn't, the attack didn't happen until October of '22, so, clarification?
Yeah, July of 2023. I had gone back for two days. The first day, I was like, ah, man, I'm really rusty. I'm, I'm in a lot of pain, but I'm just gonna power through it. I'm just gonna see if I can actually do it. I was a licensed welder. Had my D-1.1 unlimited license. I could weld just about anything from paper-thin to yay-thick. The crew that I was with, I was at the brand-new school in Randolph. We were like, you know, throwing deck, which is like the concrete or like the galvanized decking that they use to pour, pour concrete. I, I realized very quickly that I kept on dropping deck, right? So I can't really do it. Because the sheet's 20 feet plus, plus long, eight feet, 10 feet wide, you know, they're very heavy. I was like, alright, you know, they kept on bouncing me around from, you know, either doing that, doing detail welding. Couldn't hang iron because obviously I was a, they knew that I was like getting back into it and, you know, whatever else. My third day back, actually, yeah, so it'd be my, my third day back, we were packing up at the end of the day. I was walking across what we call like a hole, right? Like a hole in the floor just goes from, you know, whatever floor you were on to the ground, right? There's a safety cable above it. I'm tied off to the safety cable on the perimeter of the building. As I'm walking across the hole, my, my hand twitches and I just drop. And thankfully, I was tied off, but that was my first time having to test a harness and it was the most terrifying thing ever because I just closed my eyes and I didn't hit the ground. Sadly-
Did you have anything else?
Um, no, so, I, I mean, I, I- No, so, I mean, I appreciate all the information that you've given, but the, the, I guess what I'm trying to get at and understand, you know, one, not having the documentation, but from, but from your, from your testimony, your discussion with me, the answering the questions, it sounds like you, you had an opportunity to continue your career with the military, but didn't want to choose something different than what you were in for, which I can completely understand, that you signed up and you wanted to do a certain thing. But to, but to, to state that you lost your career in the military, I don't think is 100% accurate.
Oh, okay, so-
Based on, just, just hear me out.
Nope, totally fine.
Based on the, the idea and the premise of what you started with and where they basically said that you could have gone-
There was no options for me. The PT test is the PT, PT test standard. There's deadlifting, there's arm movements, there's push-ups, there's pull-ups, there's all this stuff-
I understand that.
That I explained to you that I could not do physically 20 pounds. 20 pounds is what my doctor limited me to.
Gentlemen.
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, no.
You have interfered plenty. I was limited to carrying 20 pounds.
I'm off that, Rich, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I was limited to carrying 20 pounds, 20 pounds.
The, the testimony that you're giving will certainly be relevant in, toward claim.
Like, the way that he's talking about, about my service to the country? Come on.
He, he did not say anything uncompromising. I believe he thanked you for your service.
Yeah, right. And then it turned around to, oh, you, you could have done something, right? No, the PT, the PT standard is the PT standard, correct? So if I'm, if I am limited to 20 pounds, sir-
Thank you.
To 20 pounds.
Thank you for your service, but the issue here is not your career, it's about the dog. Did it bite you?
He's saying that I gave up on it, though.
No, he didn't say-
I take that as a personal, a personal attack, all right?
All right, you've made your statement, thank you.
Perfect.
Counsel, do you want to put on a case?
Yes, I do, thank you, Attorney Bowen.
Proceed.
And I would like to put on my case by providing some statements, some, some evidence. And I will start off by saying, nobody should be a victim of a dog bite. And I know that Erin, myself, sure, everybody at the board, that's concerns for Mr. Herndon because he, he, he got bit by a dog and that's a horrible thing. But you know what else is horrible? You could draw a line down this, the front of this room and you, Board, are in the middle of an ongoing family feud that is not going to end tonight. The reason my client's husband isn't here is because the other side got a restraining order against him. We are in the middle of a family feud. Now, this, this victim, he had access to the best personal injury lawyers in this Commonwealth, Jeffrey Glassman and Brian Salomon. But he wants you to believe that despite the animal control officer telling him he could file for a dangerous dog hearing right afterwards, and access to the best legal minds on the plaintiff's side, he is choosing to blame the board itself for somehow giving him misinformation for bringing this hearing 200, two and a half years later. But the reason he's brought this hearing now, it's not out of some sense of duty that he, he feels to other pet owners or believes this dog is a danger to society or the community because we know it's not. This is a plaintiff scorned because he tried to bring a personal injury action against my client and ultimately, he used the words, I believe, slick. The, the case was unable to proceed. My client's had other financial obligations, which, which caused them to, to take advantage of some federal protection that's out there. So this, these people, this side of the family, they are out of options to try to hold my client and, and, and her family accountable for this. All we've heard are answers that only favor them and their side. They have, they have made Erin Baganow to be the most aloof dog owner, the most aloof relative, and somebody who certainly they don't think is worthy of their family. That is not on trial tonight. Who hit who is not on trial tonight. This family is a family in chaos and this is what happened at a wedding. This is the result of there being no other alternatives. Recently, the 209A, 209A order was issued. This is coming from a place not out of a sense of obligation or care that this dog is dangerous. This is purely a selfish, self-driven thing where he does not believe the dog is dangerous and should be put down, but it's the next thing that they have in their arsenal. And it's to attack my client and this dog. We're looking at the smartest person in the room right now when it comes to dog behavior is the animal control officer.
Counsel, are you going to be putting on a case?
This is my case. I'm making an opening statement, I'm putting on my case and I'm using the, yeah, this is, this is my case.
Okay.
The smartest person in the room, my client is terrified to speak in this room tonight because of the, of the family history, so I am her voice tonight. And I am the voice of this dog who's only done two things in its life and it's to protect my client from domestic abusers. The smartest person in the room tonight, as I was saying, is the animal control officer. She's had the training, she's been before the board for dangerous dog hearings, and it's her opinion, after looking at everything and interviewing everybody, that this dog is not a dangerous dog. In fact, the legislature has put a carve-out in the governing statute, which I, I hope the board has in front of it, and I'm sure Attorney Bowen will make sure it does. And this carve-out says-
Does.
Thank you. This carve-out says, oh yeah, dogs shouldn't bite and they're a problem if they do, but if that dog was defending itself or another person or its property, then you can't consider the dog dangerous. Because you know why? Dogs will behave in a species-appropriate manner. And this dog did that. Both times, the dog was on the property that it was living at at the time. The wedding house was a rented property, but he had been living there for a few days and continued to for a couple of days. The, the other incident with domestic violence on my client was in her bedroom. This dog did what I would want any dog to do and said to the male perpetrator, get out, you're not her, she's my person, you are not going to bother my person, but you know what? I'm not going to shred you, I'm not going to keep attacking you, I don't want to kill you, I just have to make sure that you don't kill her. Erin was terrified for her life in 2017. And I have, based on everything that I've heard so far tonight, everything's been one-sided, that Erin's done everything wrong and nobody pushed Erin and that it was her, I believe she said, stupid, poofy wedding dress that got caught. But that's not what happened. First of all, the only witness nobody can identify in the time is when this dog got out of the crate. Nobody should have even been in the house for, for Erin to tell that the wedding was outside. This was an issue between her and her husband, who was drunk and vomiting. How this entire family got in there to defend the husband is exactly what you're seeing tonight. They're all in there to defend their person, just as Smokey was doing that night. But this room turned into absolute chaos. And for, during the whole day, and I'll share this with the board. I have four of them. They can't be very far. They're right here. I have a couple of colors and black and white, man.
Sure.
There's just four pictures here. And what we know is during this wedding day, Smokey was the, the dog of honor. He was dressed up, he had his cap on, and he was being, he was being walked around throughout the day on a leash. Everybody got to play with him, including the, the victim. You'll see there's pictures in there of him holding Smokey.
I had said that.
And walking Smokey. So I'm going to ask that he be asked to, to step back as I'm putting on my case because the comments are starting to make it into the record.
I said, I had said that. I didn't know that this-
All right, no back and forth.
This is ridiculous.
Well, it's not ridiculous, sir.
No, I didn't-
You have a chance to speak. You now have a chance to speak.
Okay, totally fine.
Keep your peace. That's all.
So we heard testimony that even-
Counsel, may I ask, are you going to be calling any witnesses?
Yes.
Okay, can we get to the testimonial part of the proceeding?
Well, I'm putting in our case and, and this is a, a hearing to determine the dangers of the dog. So my client has asked me to speak for her, so I'm going through the evidence that was submitted.
I note with a certain irony about your earlier complaint about the length of the proceeding. The board is here to listen to witnesses, not to counsel.
Not true.
We certainly respect counsel. We would like to hear testimony about what happened that evening.
And they will. Right now, I want to point-
Sooner rather than later.
See, my, I'm talking about the dog and I have to point out a couple more things. And the evidence that's here, I mean, I have to be able to comment on the evidence because the, because we got 170 pages-
The appropriate time to comment on the evidence is in closing argument.
Can I reserve all of this for closing argument?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Bowen.
Please call your first witness.
I shall. Jesse. Having a seat and then state your name and, um, inform me, just state your name and where you're from for the board.
Mr. Herndon, you're going to have an opportunity to question this witness. So you want to keep on your game here, okay?
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Jessie O'Kane from Wareham.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your last name?
Is the green button on?
O.
Jessie is your first name?
Yeah.
I'm doing this for the chair, so I'm going to get it right. Jessie, J-E-S-S-I-E?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Jessie, I just have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
You know, we're here about Smokey and we're here to determine if Smokey's a dangerous dog. Have you, have you met Smokey?
Yes, I have.
On more than one occasion?
Yes, I have.
At Smokey's home or off, off premises?
At Smokey's home.
Okay. And in, in your time with Smokey, what was your role with Smokey?
I've known Erin and Smokey for about three years now. I asked her to come to my house to watch my dogs on my wedding day, then she was getting married a few months later and she has asked me on occasions to take care of her dogs.
Okay. And when you've taken, is one of the dogs you've taken care of, Smokey?
Yes, it is.
She has other dogs as well?
Yes, two others.
Have you noticed Smokey being aggressive to any people when you've been with Smokey?
Not once. I have never seen a mean-boning Smokey. I've picked up Smokey, gave Smokey a hug. I've never seen him act out at all.
Okay. Have you ever been around Smokey when somebody has, has threatened Erin?
I have not been around.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Herndon, do you have any questions for the witness?
No.
Make your questions from the board. Were you there that night?
I was not there that night.
Thank you. Next would be Karen Cole.
It's actually Karen Kinnear, Cole is my maiden name.
Oh.
K-I-N-N-E-R. And Karen with a K.
Karen, are you familiar with dog Smokey?
Yes.
How so?
I help take care of Erin's dogs from time to time and other animals.
And-
Excuse me? Yeah, pull it toward you and so the-
Talk to them.
Is that better?
Yeah, sorry.
So what role have you had with Smokey?
Taking care of Smokey.
Okay, and have you ever had an opportunity to have children around Smokey?
Yes.
And what, what children?
My, my own children. We will come to the door to say hi or goodbye to Erin. We often take care of her chickens and she'll hold the dogs and we'll come up and pet them, the ones that aren't afraid of dogs. So I have three children.
The children who aren't afraid of dogs?
Yeah, my children that are not afraid of dogs.
And have you ever been around when Smokey has been aggressive to people?
Never.
Have you had other interactions besides just your children?
Me, me walking in alone with Erin there and I believe with other people in the house, maybe one other time, like Jessie or the other girl.
And have you noticed Smokey to be aggressive?
Not once.
Were you in a, in an attacking mode or threatening mode that he would have perceived against Erin?
No.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further, anything further.
Mr. Herndon, any questions for the witness?
Was there any altercations at any point when you were around Smokey or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're going to have to speak into a mic so that it's recorded, I'm sorry.
No, if you want to come up, just sit right here.
All right, was there any altercations at any point, anytime that you were around her, the dog, or anything?
No.
No, okay. That's all.
Were you there that night?
No, I was not.
Questions from the board? Thank you, ma'am.
And our, thank you. Our final witness, Michelle Lavoy.
Hi, I'm Michelle Lavoy, L-A-V-O-Y, from Wareham.
One L or two?
Two Ls in Michelle.
Yep.
Yeah.
Michelle, do you have a familiarity with dogs?
I do. I'm a dog groomer and I used to be a veterinary technician.
And have you met Smokey?
Yes, I know Smokey.
Have you, have you been in person with Smokey?
Been with-
Sorry, have you ever, you've been physical, physically in person with?
Yes.
Okay. And it's a terrible question. Have you ever experienced Smokey being aggressive to yourself or another human being?
I have never, no.
And is there anything, in order to try to determine if Smokey's a dangerous dog or not, have you ever been around Smokey when he's been aggressive in, in any manner?
No.
And what kind, have you seen Smokey around food, for instance?
Um, yes, when I stayed at the Baggins' house when they've been away, I've fed them, walked them, so feeding all the dogs at the same time and stuff, and no, he's never been aggressive.
With the dogs?
No, with the dogs or me or anyone.
Any problem when you've walked him with any type of aggression display?
No, not at all.
Okay. Are you related to Erin?
No. We're just friends.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Were you there that night?
I was not there that night.
Do you, do you groom them?
I don't grow him, no.
Sorry, the question was, do you groom them? Okay, thank you.
I could just ask, is, he is neutered, isn't he?
Yes, he is neutered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I am closing out the testimony portion of the case.
So at this point, we should probably, well, it's do a housekeeping matter. I would like to hear a motion to take administrative notice of the contents of the file. So moved.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to take administrative notice of the contents of the file. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Quark?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself. It is so noted.
The next order of business would be to hear closing arguments from the parties, if they wish to offer them. I believe Mr. Cohen wishes to offer one. And then Mr. Herndon, you'll have a chance to make a summary argument as to what it And then Mr. Herndon, you'll have a chance to make a summary argument as to what it is you want the board to do and why.
Attorney Bowen, is, in, in my thinking about who should go first, because everything has to be about being a lawyer, the burden of proof here would be on the complainant to prove that the dog is dangerous, so would he go first or second?
He led off, so I think he would go second in this case.
Okay. Thank you. You'll notice Erin Bagan did not testify tonight and that's because she's, she's given her statements in, in other atmospheres to the police. She issued a statement that the board has. She certainly has things to say, but again, she's just not comfortable, given the history and ongoing problems with the, her in-laws. So now that the board has accepted the evidence, just a few things that I would like to point out about that will help, help make the decision whether or not Smokey is a dangerous dog. While we certainly believe the events at, at the later part of the wedding involved personal, physical threats and attacks and harm on Erin Bagan, the complainant has testified opposite. I submit, it doesn't matter how that went down. It doesn't matter who the dangerous people here are. Doesn't matter the built-up hatred. It does matter the motive for bringing this and I won't repeat myself. In the evidence you have, in the 176 pages that were submitted as essentially the medical records with the two lawyers, paperwork in there, there's a document from the ER notes. Now, this page does not have a number on it. It's dated, it has Matthew Herndon's name, 10/23/22, emergency department provider note. And in this note, which says chief complaint, animal bite, there was an intake done. And it says, this history was provided by the patient. And under it, it says, location, shoulder arm, right upper arm, quality aching, severity moderate. Incident location, wedding. Provoked, was the bite provoked? And the answer is provoked, because the bite was provoked. That was the information given within hours of this happening to the emergency room department. A further point out that just three months later, in January of '23, there's a doctor's visit note. It's listed as page 18. Has difficulty opening jars or doing overhead lifting, has tingling in right ring finger, which has improved, but has now plateaued, has some shooting pain coming down, overall feels that there's likely some gradual improvement of his symptoms. No suspicion for complete cut of the Lnar nerve. It is likely a partial injury given his intact motor functions, but dysfunction of sensory component. While the, the nature of the injury should only be limited to the fact that this was a bite to the arm. And all that, that the, that the bite victim has gone through is, is just not relevant testimony to determine if the dog's dangerous. It's relevant to determine how much he suffered and what he would be entitled to if there were compensation available.
Counsel, respectfully, may I interrupt? The, I think we can probably all agree that the gentleman has suffered injuries, but that perhaps it, it would be best not to broadcast too much of his medical issues throughout the community.
Okay. Again, it's, it's horrible that he got bit, but in the blame game here, this statute, as I was saying before, specifically carves out this type of behavior. That under 140, 157A, little A, you, you can't deem a dog dangerous, or it advises that you should consider not deeming it dangerous. I mean, it's still your discretion if the dog was protecting itself or its property. And that's what we know happened in 2017 and in 2022. Matthew Herndon was not the perpetrator of whatever happened at the wedding in 2022. He did, he did get involved and we, everybody agrees he was bit. But this dog was protecting Erin. Erin was there, she was in the room. The witnesses you heard from have all made a point of trying to say she was either facing out the window or she had ran out the back. She was coddling her dog, but Erin was in the room and so was this dog. And she was threatened. And she was, she was assaulted, she was battered, touching, and this dog responded. And again, I believe the dog showed in bite inhibition in that we've heard that it could have been, this dog was capable, given its size and, and, and what we're hearing about the dog, was certainly capable of biting more people or biting the same person multiple times. How this dog was removed from Matthew, while not that relevant, is important in the sense that my client knew enough as a pet owner to grab the dog by the hind legs. She listed, I believe, the DJ and they, that's how you, you get the dog off balance and suddenly it's going to release its bite. The point is, you have to know if you can trust Erin Bagan. Can you trust her to have this dog in this community, under the circumstances that she has the dog now? And obviously you can. And we see this because it's been 885 days since the date of the incident. And her management of this dog has been impeccable, meaning there's nobody who can critique it in a bad way. We also know that the prior incident, when she was attacked and the dog bit, there's over 2,000 days between 2017 and 2022 incident. This dog has not just been staying in its house for those nearly 3,000 days. It's living like a dog, but it hasn't attacked anybody. It hasn't attacked another dog. There's been no complaints, according to the animal control officer. Again, I would argue the person most knowledgeable in the room about dog behavior and having had the ability to digest all of this is, is the animal control officer, who's given you the information she thinks is relevant that the, these two incidents in 2017 and 2022 do not rise to the level of having to deem a dog dangerous. Still, Erin has made some changes to prevent this from happening again. One is, try to avoid the people in her life who are toxic. A second thing is, she, she know, she doesn't walk the dogs three at a time. She has three dogs. She handles one dog at a time and she handles Smokey by himself. And when she's in the yard with Smokey, Smokey's on a leash and she's on the other end of the leash. Smokey's now 13 years old. He's a geriatric dog. A lab pit mix has a life expectancy of 12. So he's slowing down, at, at the least. Erin, since Smokey was adopted and you see the adoption advertisement in there from the, the rescue and shelter, they are bound to put in there the accurate description of this dog, because if this dog was a biter and they didn't tell her that or tell the public in that, in that advertisement, they are open for a lawsuit. So we read that, that description of Smokey, he's a pretty good puppy. He was three years old. And he's been with her for the last 10 years. That's her person. She's had other relationships, not just this marriage, and he's, she's been his person throughout the last 10 years of her life. She can be trusted as a manager, from all the information you've, you've heard tonight. According to the animal control officer, in 2017, incident, bite resulting from a break and entering and, and saw, this behavior does not warrant a dangerousness hearing. In 2022, in her report, the dog did not act disproportionately to the situation. And that's based off what happened that day. That's not, doesn't need and did not take into account how the victim had to heal and other steps that he's had to take or suffer with. He, he suffered. Of course he suffered. But this is not the hearing at which you punish Erin Bagan or Smokey because of his, because of what happened after the bite. This is not the hearing, but he didn't get his chance. And so this is his only opportunity to bring that information up. But again, it has, it doesn't have to do with whether or not, and that night on October 22nd, 2022, in that room, Smokey was dangerous. Now, we heard him testify, the victim, Mr. Herndon, that, you know, he was playing with Smokey, everything was fine. They were, they were fun. He would take him back and forth, do some walking. We see him holding him and he wasn't afraid of Smokey. And Smokey wasn't afraid of him, because they were not in an atmosphere where Smokey had to be afraid of him. But suddenly, you bring these people who've been drinking all day and you bring this family into this small room with this dog in its residence at the time, when fisticuffs, fighting, screaming, yelling, swearing, happening, and he's going to protect this person and that's what he did. Smokey, in Erin's world, should be celebrated, not prosecuted. He's, he has saved her life once and possibly twice, or at least saved her from serious injury. And that's why the legislature has that carve out. We know then that Smokey's default behavior, okay, he's been alive for 4,000 days. His default behavior is what you heard from the three people who've handled Smokey. It's calm, it's fun, it's easygoing, it's not threatening. He doesn't have an attitude of aggression. That's his default behavior and that's the same behavior that he's displaying right now. Whatever Erin is doing with this dog is working. Of course she's sorry for what happened, but since what happened, there's been so many family fights and blowups and court hearings that she just can't come forward tonight at a microphone and tell her nephew how sorry she is for, for how he suffered. I'd again point out that we are now two and a half years post the time when it was recommended by the person most knowledgeable about the law, about dogs and about Wareham, who advised you should, you should, if you want to have a dangerous dog hearing, you should have it now. But I don't think the dog's dangerous, but you should have it now. And he didn't. And trying to piece together what happened two and a half years ago, of course it's going to come out as a even worse scene than it was. But tonight, Smokey is not a dangerous dog. I'm asking that the appreciation of the submission of the complaint, it being considered properly, that ultimately the board find that they should dismiss the complaint and not deem Smokey dangerous. Thank you.
Mr. Herndon?
Yes.
This is closing argument. This is your opportunity to summarize what it is that you want the board to hear about.
Absolutely.
I think it would be better, I'm sorry if he could sit there, because of, because of the camera angle.
You're right.
Yeah, sorry.
You know, summarize the case for the board, so
Yeah. Absolutely.
But tell the board what it is that you want.
So to start off, this is, you know, her counsel is making it seem like this is like a revenge tour, right? It's not, honestly. You know, I'm, it's, you know, it's so many years later and this and that, whatever else. No, it's like, it's the right thing to do. When there's a dangerous criminal on, on, on the streets, what do you do? You lock him up, right? Can't do that with dogs, you know, it's, doesn't work the same. My, my whole thing is that when I approached the Board of Selectmen, when I walked up to the second, third floor, whatever it was, whoever works in the office, shortly after I was bit, they had informed me, once you're done with medical treatment, that's when you submit the documents and we will go forth with the dangerous dog hearing. I said, okay, totally fine. Totally fine. You know, did I stop treatment at Mass, at Mass General a little further back? Yes. But does that mean that I haven't been going to the VA to figure out if there's anything that they can do? Absolutely. I have been going to the VA, I've been going to the VA a lot. But those, those records I'm not going to bring, bring forward. Like, that's no one else's business. It's, I mean, it's over and done with. That's it. You know, that's like an ongoing treatment too. So, you know, but for like the Mass General, for everything else that is like going on, like, you know, it's, that is all done. I mean, with, with that, I just like, you know, there's been so many lies told on, on, on their side about Erin, Erin and Veer got, got the dog off of Matthew. Erin was, was there the whole time. Erin was attacked and this and that. No, Erin wasn't in the room. She was not in the room. And if Smokey was responding in his own home with people that he knows and everything else, no, like, none of that is adding up to even make sense or justify him being, being, you know, like, any sense of getting a reward or being applauded for, oh, good job, Smokey, because you bit Matt in the arm because Erin was screaming. Like, that doesn't justify anything. That's a bad reaction to what had happened. Erin was not in the house and when I did get bit, she walked back in, Smokey release, Smokey release, and then walked out, sat on the deck and continued, continued to watch everything happen. That whole side that they are telling is a complete lie. You know, this obviously is not the place to, you know, I'm not going to get paid and whatever else. No. It's over and done with, right? I, I obviously know that everything is gone. I'm done with medical treatment. I'm done dealing with everything. I'm at a point now where, you know, like, it's not going to get worse, it's not going to get better, or it might get worse. I, I don't know, genuinely. But this is the right thing to do. If my dog were to bite someone, I would gladly just allow whatever process to happen, happen. That's what good dog owners do, right? What has happened here is that that's a bad dog owner that's protecting the bad dog. It's wrong. I genuinely think it's wrong. But I don't know. I honestly, I just want to say one last thing. I feel like this whole thing has been against me tonight. So I appreciate those of you who have taken the time and, you know, to speak to me nicely. But other than, than that, I mean, it's, I, I feel like this is, you know, totally against me. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chairman, you've got three things left to do here. The first is to close the hearing. The second is to accept motions regarding findings, if any. And then the third would be to accept motions regarding disposition of the case. So with, with the closure of the hearing, I hand it back to you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
Can I, can one of my witnesses make one more comment? Is that, is that possible?
I, I think we've heard.
It's, it's in regards to what you said, not.
No, at this point, everything's been heard.
Let me just explain. No, 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 please. What the attorney says is not testimony?
Well, it's in regards to the whole nine yards.
Well.
It's not putting anybody down?
No, 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 it's, you had an opportunity to testify.
I didn't know yet.
Well, I think you did, but.
May I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
Yes, I move to close the public dangerous dog hearing requested by Matthew Heron regarding dog owned by Erin Bagan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself. The hearing is now closed. Mr. Bowen, I'm going to ask you to explain the categories that could, you know what I mean, as, yeah.
I do. And this is typically where I would turn to Madam Animal Control Officer to explain the gradations in the bylaw. So if you could play that out for the board, that would be good.
So the restrictions that are allowed to be placed on a dog if they were deemed dangerous are limited to what the statute allows. And that is, there are seven, seven things that can be requested. The first being that the dog is humanely restrained. Provided however, that no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chain tethered or otherwise tied to an inanimate object. So essentially this means that the dog has to be at the end of a leash controlled by a person. The second is that the dog has to be confined to the premises. So it either has to be securely indoors and a secure run, that is further defined, or again, on a tether where somebody is holding the end of that leash. That the dog is muzzled when removed off of the property and has a strong leash, no more than three feet long. Another being that the owner, keeper of the dog has to provide proof of insurance and no homeowner's insurance and no amount less than $100,000. The dog has to be licensed with some sort of identification, whether that be microchip, photos, a tattoo, et cetera. Has to be available to us to identify the dog, that the dog has to be fixed or that the dog is euthanized. And those are the only things allowed by state statute.
Thank you. So is there a, because I don't remember, is there a lesser gradation than a dangerous dog as opposed?
Yes, so there is.
May I have those, please, explained?
So there's what's considered a nuisance dog and that opens up the ability for the town to create their own restrictions based on what's fit. But euthanasia is not a part of the nuisance dog request.
Thank you. And that's, so it would be either dangerous or nuisance?
Correct.
Thank you. Questions? Questions?
Madam Chairman, I think you have your fork on the road there.
Can I ask Devin a question?
Mm-hmm.
Devin, what's your professional opinion that we should be doing in this case?
I, based on the statute, I don't feel that it would be fit to deem the dog dangerous. I mean, as for a nuisance, I, in the past, you know, roughly two years since the incident, haven't received any calls. Typically, the nuisance dog issues are for loose dogs, barking dogs, things like that. I mean, it could technically be used in a situation of the dog biting, but, I mean, it doesn't, there's not many restrictions that I feel would be appropriate in this situation where we haven't had any further instances with this dog.
I will say one thing, it's been on my chest here. I wasn't there that night, and I'm a little confused on some of the stuff, but I will say it sounds like somebody let the dog out as a weapon during the fight. I'm not sure who did it or how, in my opinion. That's what it sounds like, knowing that the dog had the history. And listen, I'm not blaming the dog at all, that's what they're there for, and that's what I expect the dog to do, is to protect its owner. Not blaming the dog on that one at all, but what is getting to me more than anything is it sounds like somebody used the dog as a weapon, so if I could figure out who that is, that is the person I would be punishing right now. That's all I have to say on that.
So, Mr. Bowen, the next step, sir?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I was remembering back, I think it was the last dangerous dog hearing we had, where the defendants were extremely remorseful, and their lawyer came up with what seemed to be at the time a fairly creative solution of training?
Yes, so that was, that was with a dog-on-dog issue, and the dog in all situations was loose at the time of the bite, so the dog didn't really, that's where we ended up deeming the dog a nuisance and required the training, the leash, things like that. If I remember correctly, I wish I had that in front of me, but I do remember the training was involved, the dogs not to be loose, you know, the handful of things that were suggested.
So, it feels like that maybe in this instance, those similar sorts of conditions could be placed on this dog and this owner.
But the dog is in its own house doing its own thing, like, it wasn't out in the public, it wasn't going against another dog. It's, to add like stuff to it would be for no reason, it's not like a cause, you know what I mean, like?
Sort of, except that I've only heard one side of this story, the other side of this story is completely different, and there are no witnesses to back it up. And it just seems, from what I've heard tonight, with nobody saying otherwise it was actually there, it's a tough dog.
So, the only thing that I think I'd like to make a point of, and, I mean, we could certainly go down the avenue of the nuisance, but the request was that the dog be dangerous and euthanized, and based on that request, based on all the parties' testimonies involved, there was some sort of altercation that was happening at the time of the bite, whether that involved Mrs. Baggan being assaulted by another party in the home, you know, all of those things are up for debate, but based on every single witness that has come forward, there has been an altercation, even on Mr. Hernan's side, you know, where Mr. Senior was pushed by the DJ versus was he not pushed by the DJ, people were arguing, you know, that, that's the only protection that, not the only protection, wording that inappropriately, but where the statute states that the dog can't be deemed dangerous for defending a person. Even if it wasn't Mrs. Baggan, it could have been Mr. Baggan Senior in that moment based on the dog's perception.
I guess at this point, I just have to say I respectfully disagree. I think this is a really tough case all the way around. I don't want to, you know, put any dog down, and I'd like to see if we can do something, but this is a very tough dog, and it needs to be controlled in some fashion, and the owner does not seem to be interested in controlling it.
So, I guess that would lead the next question of what the restrictions would be, where, you know, in the other situations where we've deemed the dog a nuisance and required the dog to go through training, it's a young dog, a very active dog that's constantly loose when those situations happen, so we had implemented the training and, you know, the tethering, things like that, where this situation, I guess we could involve training, but keeping the dog on a leash doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem, where this problem has only been, it's only been an issue in an environment where tensions are high, there is a physical altercation. So, the restrictions would be to prevent the dog from acting that way again, which, you know, how do we, you know, we can't really limit, you know, she's not allowed to have people in her home, kind of thing. That's where, I guess, I just wonder what we could do to remedy the situation where it would be relevant.
And I understand that you need to go by the letter of the law, but you and I are coming at the same problem from very different perspectives, and I would welcome other input. I'm at a quandary here.
Mrs. Quirk, I'm sorry, you had a question, and then Mr. Bessie afterwards.
You answered most of my question. My question was whether, I mean, there's been discussion tonight, evidence given that the dog was not in a situation where he was protecting his owner and was not reacting to that threat, but I think you've answered the question by saying that particular circumstance doesn't need to exist, just the level of fighting that was going on and the sort of confusion and anger that was taking place is probably enough. Am I, am I getting that right?
Yeah, correct, and again, I wasn't there to witness anything, to make any definitive statements, but just based on the testimony that I've received from both parties and what has been stated today, I, the dog was responding to an altercation that was happening in the home.
So, having, listening to, excuse me, Ms. Corbett, and listening to what's been said, I think the dog owner, at the very least, is on notice that this particular situation
Correct, I mean.
is one that the dog does not deal with well, does, it does pose a threat to other people. Feel, you know, great empathy for you, for what you've been through, accept what you're saying, officer, but I think the owner's on notice that if something like this happens again, she knew or should have known that this was going to happen.
So, I would say that, yes, I would hope that, you know, now knowing everything, I mean, personally, but again, this is personal opinion, personal recommendation, it's not anything that I could enforce, but I wouldn't put my dog in a group setting again after that, which it sounds like, you know, her counsel has stated that she has stopped doing that and stopped allowing Smokey to be in large settings. At that.
Quick question, we did impose the requirement of insurance.
Correct, we could do that.
I think that could be appropriate here.
Yep. Okay, let me go to the next question. Did you?
I agree with that.
Sorry, go ahead.
We're good, we're good, can I interject? Perfect. So, where I can agree with Ms. Corbett, this is a, it's a difficult case, you know, there's never, there's never an easy way to determine what a dog is or what a dog isn't. In this case, we have to go strictly based off of facts that are presented from both the plaintiff and the defendant. We have to take law into consideration, we have to take elements into consideration. Do we all agree that Smokey bit someone that night? Absolutely. That we know 100%. The burden of proof needs to be met to determine whether the dog is dangerous or the dog is not dangerous. With the evidence and the testimonies and the witness statements that were presented tonight, the burden of proof to prove whether Smokey was dangerous or not wasn't met for multiple reasons. One, based on the situation and the dog's reaction in what was its not-permanent home, because it was a home that was rented for the wedding, but was still the residence of the dog at the time. Two, we have law, and we have to apply the law to the facts. Smokey attacked someone that night, not out of means of natural aggression, but out of means of the fact that it was doing what a dog is intended to do, and a dog is intended to protect, whether it's the owner, whether it's someone else that may have a threat of harm. And in this case, based off of the testimony from both sides, the dog reacted to a situation where there was, whether it was actual fighting, fisticuffs, yelling, screaming, arguing, the elements that the dog, whether it was released by someone as a weapon or not, which we can't either confirm nor deny, because we have multiple accounts of different people saying different things, some saying, I didn't know the dog was there, some saying that I fell on the cage, others saying that this person opened it, others saying, well, I don't know who opened it. So, there's a lot of what-ifs surrounding where Smokey was at the time, how Smokey got out. We don't even know if Smokey was in the crate when it happened, because we can't have concrete definitive evidence to prove that. So, with all of that being said, and the fact that the request from the plaintiff was, I want the dog deemed dangerous, and I want the dog put down, I, nor do I think the board can make a decision to lessen the charge, because those charges were not on the docket. We were asked for one specific thing, and that was to deem the dog dangerous and to have the dog euthanized. Both burdens of proof were not met, in my opinion, based on the facts and based on law. So, to sit here and try to have a conversation about, well, can we do nuisance dog, can we do this restriction, my answer would be no, based on what was asked for, the evidence that was presented, and the law that we need to apply. There's a standard that needs to be met to determine the dog dangerous, and this standard was not met for one reason and one reason only. The law states what you can do for the dog, but the dog is protected by the law based on the elements of the circumstances, albeit it's very disheartening and unfortunate that the incident happened. There's a protection that the dog is afforded based on the reaction of the circumstance, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, the law states what the law states, and we have to go by what the law states based on the facts and the burden of proof, which in my eyes was not met. And that's it.
I have a couple of comments. In the 10 years that the owner has had the dog, there have been either two or three instances. None of them have risen to the level of having the animal control officer bring the action. Mr. Bessie has pointed out that we were asked to do two things tonight, to find the dog dangerous and also to order it euthanized. My personal feeling is that since October of '22, or whenever the attack occurred, there have been no instances of any sort. I've heard that the dog is always on a leash, the dog is walked individually, and I haven't heard that there have been any other complaints about the dog in any manner, shape, or form. So, I'm going to make a suggestion to this board, and Mr. Bowen, you can let me know if this is okay. I think we could do, I think we could do two things, maybe. One would be to poll the board and see whether we think that the dog should be deemed dangerous and euthanized, and then if the majority thinks that that's the case, then we would go forward with that order. If the majority does not think that's the case, then we could discuss a nuisance dog denotation with things that I think she's already done, to be honest with you. I mean, of the seven things that you would have to have the dog be required to do, or the owner to do, the dog is neutered, the dog is always on a leash, the dog is contained, the dog has not had any other instances in the two and a half years, the 800 days or whatever it is. So, I would suggest that this board, and I'm going to poll you, to see whether we should deem it dangerous and euthanized. Would that be a fair step to take?
No, I mean, yes, it's a fair step to ask, but no, I do not believe the dog needs to be euthanized.
Yeah, but I want to, okay, so let me.
Yeah.
You can tell that I was not your 10th grade teacher. Mr. Bessie, do you deem the dog to be dangerous and should be euthanized?
No.
Ms. Quirk, do you believe the dog is dangerous and should be euthanized?
No.
Ms. Corbett, do you believe the dog to be dangerous and to be euthanized?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
I already answered.
Well, do it again for the record. Nor do I believe the dog should be deemed dangerous and euthanized. I will now entertain any other suggestions that you might like to throw out to see whether we can get a consensus of at least three of us to make any further suggestions. But I would also like to ask the question, that was the action that we were asked to take. So, now I'm going to ask you the what-if. We found, we did not find on behalf of the plaintiff, so do we have any other action? Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was interested in Selectman Bessie's presentation, which I thought was pretty darn good. And it's certainly one way of interpreting it, there's an alternative way of looking at it, which is the concept of the lesser included offense, where, you know, you have the big offense, and then like the Russian doll, there are lesser offenses that sort of fit within that bigger offense. And so, certainly the board can take whatever position it wants to on this, so could I say, you know, Ron, you're wrong? No, 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 I would not say that. You can, you can treat this as you wish. If you want to say, this was the charge, it wasn't met, that's fine, you can do that. If you want to treat it as a lesser, some kind of lesser included offense where it's a nuisance dog, where you say it must always have a leash in public, there must be insurance, the dog must not be introduced to people that it's not familiar with, you know, things of that nature, you know, it's fine. And I won't speak for Attorney Cohen, who's very skillful in this area of the law, but my guess is that those are the types of conditions that would probably work. But I don't get a vote, and I'm not sorry of it.
Could I make one more statement to consider prior? The only thing, and I'm not super familiar, so I'd love to hear from Attorney Cohen, is typically with the nuisance orders, it's when the dog is a public nuisance versus not. The dangerousness could be based off of, you know, obviously the bite taking place anywhere, but typically, I mean, I don't have any experience with deeming a dog nuisance that isn't a public nuisance.
Mr. Bowen?
Well, you sure you're not going to law school when you're part-time?
I consider it.
Devin, come on. The animal control officer is, oh, don't insult her. The animal control officer is very skilled. The, here's the thing, I'm speaking for myself here, really, okay? Because I've been listening to all of it along with the rest of you. If the dog's out in public on a leash, we know that it doesn't necessarily react well to strangers if it feels like its owner is under some kind of threat. So, how hard is it to leash the
the dog? Is it a public nuisance just by virtue of the fact that it's on its own property? Well, I don't know, Devon. If, if the dog was barking incessantly but on its own property, would that make it a private nuisance or a public nuisance?
No, it would still be public, because if it was a barking dog issue, it would be the neighbors coming forward with complaints.
So there you go. The fact that it's on private property isn't dispositive of the question of whether it's a public or a private nuisance. So, you know, what I think everybody worries about, and I know no one more than you, is the, the risk of somebody getting hurt, some innocent member of the public, you know, the gentleman who's sitting there. He was hurt. So could you treat it as a nuisance dog? Yeah, I think so. It's a nuisance if, if innocent members of the public, I mean, what happens if somebody rings the doorbell and the dog's out of its crate? So leash in public, insurance, you know, I mean, you just want to make sure that whatever, you know, not introduced to, to strangers, you know, you just want to make sure that whatever happened to this gentleman can never happen to anyone else. That's all. And really, that's all I have to add.
So it's, okay, so item number one would, it always has to be restrained. I think that, under the dangerous dog, I think that the owner has proven, and nobody has disagreed, that that is always the case. The dog is confined to the premises unless it's leashed, I believe, that she also has demonstrated, or that that's what I've been told by the attorney. The leash being no longer than three feet, I would ask that, you know, that it also, you know, not be shorter than, not a retractable leash, leash, that kind of thing, because those are really bad. I would, if she's a homeowner, I'm guessing that she has $100,000 worth of liability insurance, but we could certainly talk about that. The dog clearly has been neutered, according to the testimony. It's been licensed regularly and vetted regularly, and therefore it's identifiable. So I, you know, all of the things that would have to happen for it to be deemed dangerous seem to me already are being done, and the dog hasn't had any incidences in the two and a half years.
One item, the, the dog is excluded from the homeowner's insurance, as I understand now. And so that's one of the reasons why a financial recovery wasn't available to the complainant. And I would ask, Mr. Cohen, is the dog insurable?
Two responses. One is, I don't know if there was coverage or not. You seem to be more familiar with that. Is a dog insurable with two bites? No. And you can get standalone liability insurance, but if they hear two bites to a person, two different, they will not care about the circumstances. They'll just be, an insurance company will say, "We're not writing it." So I don't believe it. But the statute just requires using best efforts. There might be some coverage out there, she just might have to pay for it, but it just requires that you produce proof of a reasonable effort to try to, to insure the, the risk.
Yeah, and there is a letter in the file that, that acknowledges an exclusion in her homeowner's policy. Part of discovery.
Can I say something? Are witnesses allowed to say anything?
Not at this time.
You had a chance.
So I'm gonna throw it back at you, my board members. We have taken the action of finding it not dangerous and not ordering it to be euthanized. Are there any other restrictions that you would like to put on the dog that seem to be above and beyond what she's already doing?
Yes. So I, that she provide proof that she is attempting to get insurance for the dog that she may have to pay for. I would like that to be included. And there was something about the ability to, while the dog is being leashed, according to the owner, that whoever is holding the dog on that leash can control that dog.
We can put an age limit of 18, is usually what we do, or able to control the dog, but with a minimum age of 18.
And I would like Officer Devon to prove that the owner is already doing the many things that we think she's doing. I would like that to be a part of it, that you follow up on that.
I don't see how she can do that. It's up to the owner to provide proof. It's not up to her to follow.
Well, I see no proof before me.
Okay, so my question, Mr. Bowen, would be if we made some suggestions or requirements, it is up to Mr. Cohen on the behalf of his client to provide that information to us. Is that correct?
Well, yes, but that doesn't preclude the animal control officer from saying, "Show me this" or "Show me that."
Right, but I don't want her spending her whole life tracing this, chasing this dog around or walking around with the dog. I, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Corbett. Well, it's part of the job if there have been complaints, but in two and a half years, there have been no complaints.
Could I make one comment, just in regards to that? So typically, when we go forward with, you know, doing the inspections, moving forward after the dangerousness hearings, things like that. So, for example, like if we've ordered them to have a structure in the yard, I have to go in and make sure that they've met compliance or that. Things like the dog being walked on leash and, you know, the length of the leash and the non-retractable, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to go make sure she has that type of leash available, but, you know, and without having complaints that the dog has been loose, I, I don't really have any proof that the dog isn't being leashed-walked. So that would typically be where, you know, if, if we put that restriction and then I get, you know, a call that she's walking the dog without a leash down the street, that would absolutely be in violation of the nuisance order, but it's not something that I, you know, I'm happy to patrol the area. And, yeah, I, yeah.
No, but she doesn't have, or, Madam Chairman, she doesn't have to. It's just, if, if there's a complaint about a violation of a condition, there you are.
And I wasn't asking for ongoing surveillance. I was asking for a one-shot deal, that that dog, as you have said, is, the owner is already doing all these things. I would like proof that she is already doing all these things. I have seen no proof of any of her claims here tonight at all. I would like to know that those things are true.
Okay, let me try it a little bit differently. Is there anyone here who doesn't believe that the dog, is there anyone on this board who believes that the dog should not be restrained? So we all believe the dog should be restrained at all times off the property. Am I correct?
I think any dog should be restrained off property.
Well, there's a leash law in this town, I get it. Yeah, okay. Is, is there anyone who would disagree with the recommendation that the dog is always on a leash that is three feet or less and not a retractable leash? Is that a reasonable stricture to give to the dog? Yes, yes, yeah? Okay. Would you like to have evidence that the homeowner has tried to ensure the dog?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
No, but that's three to two, so yeah, we'll go with that one. The, is the dog chipped? No. Is it chipped? The dog is already chipped, the dog is already neutered, and I think we sort of have come to what seems to be a consensus of this board. Am I, none of you saying anything?
I mean, I can, I can say something, but-
No, I want, I, no, we've been here a long time. So what I'd like to have is a consensus that those would be the recommendations that this, that I, as the chair, would send to Mr. Cohen on behalf of this board, with no finding of it being a nuisance dog and no finding of it being a dangerous dog. Is that reasonable?
But if we don't find it being nuisance or dangerous, I don't think we can put restrictions on it.
See, that's where, that was the question I was asking.
We can't.
But we find it to be a nuisance.
But you can't find it, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's lesser included offenses.
The charge that was brought, and this is where I-
Philosophical.
Yeah, and I agree with him.
The charge that was brought was nuisance, not, dangerous and euthanized. Neither one of those were met. Period. End of story. Conversation over. Done.
And I agree with him too.
So we, that, that's it. It has to be moved on.
I may just be an old-fashioned law and order, old-time prosecutor-type guy, but I do believe in the lesser included defense. I understand that not everyone does.
Thank you.
But it was not, but it was not, but it was not asked. When the charges were brought, there was one charge brought, it was not met, that's it. I don't think we, as a board, can sit here and say, "Well, they didn't ask for it, but I think we should include it." We can't do that.
May I ask Mr. Cohen a question on behalf of the board? Mr. Cohen, would you agree to those things that I read and, and that virtually all of us agreed unanimously, except for the one, whatever the one it was?
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair. I spoke with my client, and while technically an order has to be placed, made, or labeled in order to, to put restrictions in, in speaking with my client tonight, here, right now, I can tell you that she would agree, voluntarily agree, to try to get insurance, to using a leash of that length when off the property. And those seem to be the two main ones. I think there's a couple others, but she would voluntarily agree. And what that means is, even though the dog's not labeled, by agreeing to it, we, we wouldn't appeal it. We are voluntarily agreeing that those, those items that the board mentioned, she will do, which gives it the weight, Attorney Bowen, I, I think you might agree, gives it the weight of an order that's issued by the board, and with that comes the power to enforce it.
That is agreeable with your client?
Yes.
Is that agreeable with the majority of this board? It's, it's, it's a bunch of conditions with no labels.
And proof. I agree with what-
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna no vote.
I'm gonna yes vote, and I'm also going to say, "I appreciate everybody here tonight." The letter will be written to you, to you on behalf of your client. It won't go out for a couple of days, because we have to write it, and then we have to, you know, make sure that it's all in, in here.
So let me, let me, I just want to understand this, and forgive me if maybe, with it being late, and maybe I don't understand this. So what your client is saying that she will do is on a voluntary basis, and there will be no label to the dog, neither nuisance or dangerous, but these are just voluntary conditions that she is willing to provide?
Why do we style a consent order?
Thank you. Just in quick response, I, I have to say, I appreciate the, the debate, the, the smartness that's in this room, and I appreciate everything that you said about what the law says you can and cannot do. But I also appreciate that this young man went through something. I also appreciate that it's quarter of 10, and that my client, she takes responsibility for her dog, and she's doing some of these things. And while technically, I believe you're correct, and in the interest of, of just being reasonable and appreciating the opportunity here, my client is agreeing to, to bring some, try to bring some peace and closure to this, by agreeing voluntarily that that is essentially an order.
Do the two legal gurus agree? Yes, that's you.
Consent order.
Thank you. Now I will ask for an order, a motion to adjourn this meeting in total.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? A motion made and seconded to adjourn, it's not debatable. I will go for a world-class vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself. We are, yes, we are adjourned at 9:45. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. It was a very long night, very unpleasant happenings, and we'll go from there.